So we are here for a workshop tonight, and we're just going to start meetings and workshops a little bit differently from here on out. So I'm just gonna, I've been asked to do this by a constituent, and so I'm going to accommodate them. So just welcome to Lewiston City Hall. Lewiston is the city, the second largest city in Maine, but the city with the biggest heart.
Sounds like a logo.
So first up on the agenda, we have a discussion of the council representative to the Maine Municipal Association's Legislative Policy Committee.
Yes, I think you all know that we have two representatives to the Legislative Policy Committee because of the size of the community. There are two per senate district, and since we have a full senate district in our community, we get to pick those two. We don't have to split it with anyone else. Recently, at least historically, it's been myself and recently the mayor who have sat on that committee. Kristin, the mayor now, has indicated that it doesn't work with her schedule, since it's on Thursdays during the day when she's otherwise occupied on the other side of the, of the city, over at the State House. So we have a position open. We did send out an email late last week, asking if there was any interest, and I understand Alicia's the only one who indicated interest. So unless there's other interest, I would assume she would be the one we're going to select.
Any discussion on the council?
And the next meeting is next week.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. What an honor.
And we'll be, do we vote on that on the?
There'll be a formal vote on the, on the regular council agenda tonight.
Okay, great. So then the second item on our agenda for the workshop is presentation of proposed FY20 municipal budget.
Okay, as you all know, this is the time of year annually when we start our budget process, and we begin twice a week budget meetings. Tonight is basically just an overview. You have copies of the entire budget, and I sent out the budget message late last week electronically, so you had a, hopefully, a little bit extra time to take a look at it. But basically, we'll try to just give you an overview, again recognizing that this is the start of the process, not the end of the process, and there will be numerous changes and adjustments and issues that arise during the budget process that we'll work through as we go through the whole thing. So on the real, real large scale, overall, our operating and debt service budget for next year on the city side was, be a little over 46 million as proposed. That is up 2.6 million or 6.1 percent. Overall, the various departments requested an additional $6.4 million over and above where they were last year. We have cut 3.6 million from their proposed budgets. Not all of that totally disappears. We've transferred a bunch, as we have in numerous times in recent years, transferred a number of their requests into effectively to capital budget, their capital items or one-time expenditures, and have suggested that we fund those from fund balance for 2.6 million. I think one of the things that's going to be really of interest this year, and we need to spend a lot of time on, is the capital plan, and how we are going to, what we're going to fund, what we're going to fund through bonds, what we're going to be funding through fund balance. And I think we've put some recommendations out there as a starting point, but I would anticipate that there will be adjustments and changes in those as we go through the process, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go on. On the expenditure side, what's driving the expenditure budget is, first off, personnel. That's probably no huge surprise. Personnel is up almost $1.3 million due to negotiated salary adjustments with our various labor unions. Additional public safety overtime, you will see that, in particular, the police department is anticipating a fairly significant increase in overtime, given their experience last year, given their vacancies, and some employees that they have who will not be available this summer, either due to light duty or military service requirements. So going into the summer, we know that we need to be prepared for ensuring we don't have the kind of problems we had last year, so there is a big bump there. Personnel also includes the two positions that the council requested be included in the base budget in last year's budget process, an assistant fire chief and a city planner. On the salary side, that's $164,000. When you add benefits in, it rounds out to about $216,000 for those two positions. Fringe benefits are up a little over $600,000. Some of that is healthcare costs, even though we finally have everybody in PPO 500, which has been a process we've been involved in for a number of years. We're still looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars increase there. Workers' compensation, which actually I have miscategorized here, it's actually in miscellaneous and other, is also up because of, okay, because of the fact that we're underfunding workers' compensation, so we've increased that line item by about almost a quarter million dollars. Our joint agencies are up $43,000, which is fairly modest, but please note that the Lewiston-Auburn Transit Committee has a new service request. That new service request would basically restore the service that was cut from Auburn a couple of years ago. You may recall that Auburn, Auburn during the budget process, made a decision to cut their contribution to LATC. LATC then implemented a series of, of service reductions in Auburn. Auburn has requested, and of course, we'll have to see what their council does, has requested that those service cuts be restored, and restoring those is a fairly expensive proposition at this point. It's also tied in with the fact that there have been some changes in federal funding, and some incentive money that the Transit Committee had been eligible for in past years they're no longer eligible for. So taken all together, that, if that, if that is done, system would return to 50-50 percent funding, and our costs for that service would increase about $54,000. I know the LATC folks will be coming in here and presenting their budget in more detail and trying to explain exactly what's being proposed or what Auburn is looking at. Be aware, however, that with federal limitations and with losing the incentive funds that the transit system used to be eligible for, we are looking at increasing costs because this coming year's budget is being subsidized in part through the last year of a different federal grant that's going away. So a year from now, we're going to be looking at some significant issues there. Debt service is up 584,000. Oops, excuse me, I'm getting a little, I'm going to push the right button here.
Counselor Mark.
Before you go to the next slide.
There it is.
Talk about supplies. We're going to, we'll get to that. I got out of order. Oh, okay. I forgot to mention on this earlier slide that debt service is up about $580,000. That's because we have to cover both the issue we just put out, plus we are looking at putting, or at least at the moment, planning on putting our bond issue this year out in the spring, in order to get ahead of any potential adjustments that the Federal Reserve might make. That's something we ought to look at during the budget process and keep our eyes on, because it's not quite clear anymore what the Federal Reserve is going to do. It was pretty clear that they were on the trajectory of a quarter percent every couple months. They backed off that at their last meeting, so we'll have to wait a little bit and see. Okay, supplies are up $27,000. That's not too bad, given a fuel price increase of about $51,000. We have basically had some very good pricing in our fuel. We anticipated it was going to go up even more, but we were able to lock it in again at a relatively low price. Apparel costs, which is departmental clothing plus our various employee clothing allowances, went up $29,000. But we are seeing a $35,000 reduction in food and medical costs and general assistance. You will see this a little bit later, that the general assistance budget is declining pretty significantly. We are seeing fewer and fewer clients. I think that reflects a couple of things. It reflects, number one, that the economy's obviously been good. We have also not seen refugees and immigrants coming in through the refuge, through the immigration process of the federal government, and the number of asylum seekers we are seeing apply and use general assistance has been declining.
As an accountant, what confused me when I first looked at this is you have a negative inside brackets, parentheses, it's like a negative negative.
It isn't, well, yes, I, it took me a while to get it to do that, by the way. It didn't want to accept that.
Because at first, I thought the fuel price was actually a decrease, until you went through the.
Right. Okay, contractual.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Could you go back to the workers' comp, I think it's the first, the one before? You have workers' comp as an increase, is that because of us, or is it because of a projected cost in lieu of the bill that could potentially go through?
It, it, no, this is based on our current experience. We're basically, as you may recall during the audit, we are underfunding our workers' compensation system.
Okay.
And so we have been attempting for a number of years to catch up.
Okay.
So we're trying again to add a little bit more money to the workers' compensation system. There are a whole series of bills in the legislature that could impact workers' compensation. Most of them would more likely than not increase our costs, so that's something that could have an effect later on as we get through the budget process. Contractual services are up due to a variety of things. Vehicle rental for the motor pool is increased, that's a reflection of obviously the increases in costs associated with operating our motor pool. Vehicle and equipment repair is up, a lot of that is stuff related to rust, proofing and dealing with rust in the city's fleet, because obviously that's a significant problem we deal with. Janitorial services has been an ongoing issue with the city for a number of years, trying to find a janitorial service that would keep our buildings up to any kind of reasonable standard. So you may, those of you who've been with the Finance Committee have seen, we've changed janitorial firms a number of times, and in some instances, I think we've come to a realization we're just going to have to pay a little bit more to get quality people doing building, cleaning, and not have to go through multiple changes in the course of a year in, in who's cleaning our buildings. Crosswalk and street painting is up about $50,000. That's due to the emphasis we're putting on crosswalks and the piano key crosswalks, plus the contract that we've gone to with an outside contractor doing stop bars and turn arrows. That's pretty intensive personnel required work, so I think contractor can probably do that better than our employees or faster than our employees can, and free our employees up to do other things. In our management information system, there's an increase in maintenance costs on our various software and hardware packages, plus licensing costs associated with software. And then finally, our landfill waste and ash hauling contract has increased. That was bid, I don't know if it was this year or the year before, but there's an inflator in, in that contract. Yes, Mike?
On the crosswalks and the street painting, do we have somebody from Public Works that inspects every now and then the contractor that applies that paint? The reason I ask that is there a special thickness that they're supposed to have, a minimum thickness, so it doesn't wear out as, as quickly?
I'm going to suggest that there probably is, and there probably are also requirements for reflectivity, and.
Dale's shaking his head yes.
Dale's shaking his head yes, so.
Thank you.
Dale, if you want to add anything, please do.
No, I can talk about that Thursday a little bit.
Thank you.
On the revenue side, there continue to be some good indicators. Auto excise tax continues to go up, although we keep, we're a little bit cautious about that, because there have been so many new vehicles registered. There was a period of time, starting a couple of years ago, where we were seeing a lot more vehicles being registered, which we thought was an indication of people buying a second vehicle and/or people who had not previously owned vehicles buying them. That has pretty much stabilized, so we're pretty much dealing with the same number now, and we have an awful lot, we know we have an awful lot of new vehicles in our excise group, and as you probably know from your own experience, that amount drops off quickly as vehicles age, so we're watching it closely. Revenue sharing is up, I, we have budgeted based on 2 percent. We have budgeted based on what the state gave us last year. The governor has proposed 2.5 percent, going to 3 percent in two years out, so we'll have to watch that, and I've got some information about what the effect would be if that actually happened this year. Investment income is up a little bit. I don't know if we're starting to see interest rates ease off again.
They're, they've been folding around, yes.
Okay. Parking, we're seeing again some increases there due to some additional activity in, particularly, I think, in Bates Mill complex, where there's some tenants who are expanding. General assistance is down. Here you can see the impact in general assistance. Our, our state funding for general assistance, that's 70 percent of what we spend on benefits for our, our clients, is estimated to be down about $270,000 next year. That's on a base of about $850,000, so it's a significant drop that we're seeing in general assistance. Violations Bureau, we no longer receive the rent from the state for that, and tax sharing from Auburn is also down a little bit.
So Ed, I just want to clarify for folks at home that when we're talking about that general assistance aid, that's money that we get from the state.
That is correct.
So we're getting less money from the state. That's not how much.
That's correct. The state, the state reimburses the city for 70 percent of all of the benefits that it provides to our GA clients. We pay for 100 percent of the administration of the program in terms of the staff of the office, but the state does reimburse us for 70 percent of all of our expenditures.
So we're going to discuss this?
Yes.
Okay, because Wendy could just explain, in these days and age, how we can cut budgets like that? I know you, you mentioned its, its numbers to a certain extent.
We have, we have considerably, we have fewer clients than we've had, and it seems to be a declining number over the last couple of years, and we're still watching it on a month-by-month basis to see if we've gotten to a, to a stabilizing point or if it's going to continue to decline.
Thank you.
So at the same time, expenditures are decreasing too, because the 70 percent hasn't changed year over year.
That's correct.
And could you further explain what tax sharing with Auburn is?
Yes, the city, the cities of Auburn and Lewiston have a number of tax sharing agreements. This is the tax sharing agreement covering, I think covers two things. It covers the airport and park. The airpark is the primary one.
Yes.
And is there still, there's another one on the dams?
That's, that's our expense to them.
That's from us to them?
Yeah.
Okay. So out near the airport, there is an industrial park. The city assisted in the capital investments, tried to put, to bring that, that park online, and so we share the tax revenue from that park and the excise tax revenue as well. New program requests. You haven't seen a whole bunch of these in recent years. I guess people think the economy's getting better, so there's a whole bunch more this year from, from the staff. Their staff has requested 13 new positions, everything from a position in the city clerk's office, one in finance, two in police, plus a, plus a school resource officer that's been requested by the, by the school department. Fire inspector, that's a recommendation that's coming out of rental registration. Public Works has asked for a highway worker, a service person in motor pool, two mechanics in motor pool. Library's asked for a technician. Recreation folks have asked for a programmer and a program aide, plus some miscellaneous small adjustments elsewhere. In addition to those, on contractual services, there's some requests there for some additional service, including contract plowing as an example, and we have included in there as an additional service request, contracting for a parking management firm to manage our parking system. I hope, I know we'll talk about that as we go through the process. Technology-related is a couple of things. Primarily, those are, what do they call them, tablets? Tablets for code enforcement, fire inspection, those kinds of people to use, or.
Building maintenance.
And building maintenance, to use in the field, so that they don't have to wait and come back to the office to enter all of the data that they're collecting. That's why I have Heather sitting here next to me.
So Ed, for the contractual services for, like the plowing and the other things you mentioned, are those recommendations from the Public Works Oversight Committee, or are those department?
I think at this.
Or both?
At this point, they're primarily from the department.
Okay. Thank you.
And then other, I'm not even sure, don't even remember what all else is in other.
The joint agencies from the bus.
The bus.
The transit is the big one.
Yeah, that would be the big one in other.
Can I ask?
So it would be overall 15 new positions suggested, but two are already in the budget based on.
Two are already included in the base budget based on last year's direction.
Thank you. And can you remind us what those are? Can you remind us what those are?
The planner.
The planner.
And the.
Fire assistant.
Battalion chief, right? It's a battalion chief?
It, it would be more likely, I think, what we, what we would go with is an assistant chief.
Okay.
With just a title differential.
Do we not have that right now? I thought that was, I thought we already had that.
Yeah, you can have more.
Okay, all right.
Capital expenditures, and again, as I mentioned earlier, this is one of the big issues this year. There were, there were $2.6 million in capital expenditures recommended in the base budget. We have recommended cutting $300,000 from that amount and funding the same, must be a mistake there, right?
It's your rounding.
It's my rounding.
That's not my mistake.
So basically, we're going to, we're going to not recommend about $370,000 of the capital that was in the budget. On the bonds, we're recommending, at least as a starting point, $10 million on the city side and 2.6 on the school side, but again, as you know, that is significantly over the limit of the 80 percent limit, so it's something that we will be revisiting in detail. One of the things that will play into that is our fund balance. As of 6:30 18, our fund, our unassigned fund balance was about $16.5 million. Our policy calls for a ceiling of 12 percent and a floor of 8 percent, so as of that date, we were close to 13 percent, so we were above the ceiling at, at that level, so that certainly is, is an amount that can be applied, and we've recommended applying a portion of that. Capital one-time repairs, we're recommending 2.6 million. That's, that would take us down to 10.86 percent. We are also recommending $200,000 toward the LCIP use, so that would take us down a little bit further. At 10.7 percent, we are about $900,000 above the 10 percent level, so there's again some flexibility there that can be used as we go through the budget process. I think last year, that was the target that was, that the council selected, was to try to keep it at 10 percent, so certainly that will be something that we will spend some time on later in the budget process. I'm not going to spend much time on the school department, because you'll be meeting with the school department in, in a week, next Monday, at the high school. Their total revenues are up about 1.3 million or 2 percent. They are carrying forward from the current year 1.56 million, which is up 1.76 million from last year, where they had a small deficit going into the, into the budget. Always makes you a little nervous when people use all of their carry forward, but you never really know in the school department, because they're, they're looking at this current year, and that's their estimate of year-end amount that they can carry forward. I would anticipate, but don't know, that they're probably somewhat conservative in that estimate. Expenditures are up $3.5 million, 4.2 percent, and I, they'll go into much more detail about that than, than we will. County tax is 2.8 million, almost $2.9 million next year, that's a little over a 6 percent A couple of things, measurements that are used in our charter and/or state law against budget, one is the Gross National Product Implicit Price Deflator. Try to say that fast five times, which is basically a measure of the growth in domestic production in real dollars, not a, not inflated dollars. So it deflates real production, so you're not getting credit for just the inflationary impact. That indicator of the last year is 2.2 percent. Under our charter, we are required to have four, five votes to approve a budget if we go over that 2.2 percent, over the GNPI PD. We are three point, almost 3.46 million over the limit, so as things stand right now, this would require a two-thirds majority vote. This gets a little bit more complicated, because the way the world works, the state only requires a majority vote to approve the school budget. So the school budget can be approved by four votes, even if we're over the GNPI PD, but the city budget can't. And if the school budget's approved and the city budget isn't, then I have to produce a city budget that would bring the entire budget below the 2.2 limit. So it's, our charter no longer matches up with state law, and that creates an issue there, so that might be something that would be worth the council and a future charter commission taking a look at. We also have the LD1 limit, which is state tax levy limit. Under the state levy limit, we are allowed to increase our tax levy, the actual amount we raise through property taxes, by a certain percentage based on the, I think it's 10-year average of real personal income growth in the, in the state, which is now at 2. almost 8 percent, plus the property growth rate, which is a local rate of how much new stuff has been added to our property tax rolls, either through new construction, subdivision of land, or renovation and expansion of existing properties. So that's at 1.4 percent. So under the state law, we, we would be allowed to raise our tax levy by 4.2 percent. If we exceed, exceed that theoretically, we have to get five votes. We're proposed at 8.3. However, we get credit for being under the limit in past years, so where we've been under the limit, we have SLAC. So the actual levy limit is $48 million against the $33.9, $34 million that the budget proposes. So, so that is not something we have to worry about. I will tell you that many municipalities in the state have just totally started ignoring the LD1 limit, because there's no enforcement mechanism at the state level. The state, I don't think even collects the data anymore.
You can no longer find a current form on the website.
So, but we keep tracking it, because it is state law, and if you violate state law, somebody can always come after you and create issues for you later, so we try to Overall, at the same time, our assessed value is up 3.2 percent. That's 61.7 million. That is the largest increase we have seen in some time. It is made up of a couple of things, obviously new growth, about 60, 12 million of it is the state increasing its reimbursement for the homestead. It has been 50 percent, it went to 62 and a half percent. They did that so late last time that we didn't build it into the budget, the budget had already been adopted. So about 12 million of that 61, 62 million in new value is due to the state reimbursing us at a higher level for the homestead. Yes, Mike?
What does that translate into tax revenue?
It's just a shift.
61 million, the totals, the total amount, the 61 million?
Yeah.
About 1.9, you figure it out.
That's calculated. Go ahead and go. Three million-ish.
Well, 100 million would be 3 million.
About 3 million and 80,000.
Additional revenue?
Additional revenue? Is it, is it that number times the 28.67?
Yeah. It would be that number divided by 1,000 times 20, 28 point whatever. So I don't know that that 300,000 number is right.
I don't think it is. About 176,000, 170. Let me look at it, because I think it's a shift. I don't think-
Well, part, part of it is a-
Because it's the incremental difference.
Part of it is a shift.
We'll get back to it.
The, remember that the homestead only goes to certain portion of our tax base, so that, that the homestead actually increases our tax rate for overall, while it lowers the taxes bill for those people who qualify. So it does mess things up a little bit. So here's where we're beginning. On the city side, we're looking at a 81 cent increase in the tax rate. That's 4.9%. That is a lower rate than we started at last year, so I guess there's at least some good news here.
And what'd we get down to last year?
16.5, well, it's 16.57 was what we got down to.
It was in the-
Oh, it was in-
Forty cent range?
Yes, it was-
Somewhere in there.
That was total, that included city and county, right? Did the 40 cents include-
That was total overall, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
The school is, is, their, their budget proposal shows no tax increase. And I think you may have all seen that they looked at three options, and I'm sure that we'll have some discussion about that next Monday. County's up 4 cents, 2.75%. So overall, it's about 3, a 3% increase.
Can I clarify one point on the school?
Yes.
So we were told about three options, but the budget that has been presented is the flat budget.
Correct.
So the school committee has not taken any action on their opinion of the three options. It was just kind of, we were informed of those three options, that's all.
Okay.
Is this the lowest option?
No.
No.
This is the minimum required local share option.
No.
No.
Oh, it's not?
So we were presented option A, minimum required local share. We were presented option B, flat over last year, and option C is, I believe, 20 cents higher. And so everything we've seen is this.
So none of them is lower?
Than minimum required local share?
Than the 10.68?
Option A is lower.
Is lower.
Yes.
But I don't think we could meet our contractual obligations to our union contracts with the lower.
Okay.
What does this do to a, a property tax bill? If your assessed value is 75,000, that would be a $50, $49 increase. If you're at 150,000, you'd be at $113 per year. And a quarter million dollar home would be at $198 per year. Now, let's talk a little bit about the potential impact of revenue sharing. The statutory rate, as you know, is 5% of sales and income, state sales and income tax that goes back to municipalities and revenue sharing. The state has rated that repeatedly and heavily as, to, to the current level where the state is retaining 80% of that money. The governor has proposed in her budget that the rate would go to 2.5% next year and 3% the year after, after. That would produce about $725,000 in additional revenue for us next year, which we have not yet included in the budget. We want to get a better feeling, obviously, for where the state's going to end up. There is a hearing tomorrow in Augusta on this part of the, of the governor's budget. If that is funded and included in the budget, that would be a 36 cent reduction, which would reduce the overall tax rate increase on the city side from 81 cents to 45 cents, or from 4.9 to 2.7%. And the overall increase to 1.7%. Yes, Mike?
I didn't follow your numbers. But in the previous slide, I think it was 85 cents increase?
Yes, but that's 4 cents for the county, it's 81 cents for the city.
Yeah, and that's 85. And you said the 36 cents would bring it to 45. Wouldn't it be 49?
81 minus-
85 minus 36?
80, well, I was just talking about the city only.
Yeah, he's only looking at the city.
City only would be 45, and then add the four.
Right, then add the four.
Yeah, okay.
So I think the next, this slide shouldn't come as any big surprise. You can see what's been happening to our tax rate over the years. It peaked in 2000 and looks like three or four, and then declined until the recession hit. And since the recession hit, it's been gradually increasing. About $2 worth of that is probably due to the reductions in revenue sharing alone. So that certainly has had a continuing impact on our budget. So hopefully, we can start seeing that trend reversed. On the enterprise funds, I'll start off with the good news. Good news is, we are not recommending any rate increases in the coming year. However, all three of them, water, sewer, and stormwater, are currently operating in a cash deficit and making it up through accrued cash that they've developed over the years. So at the end of fiscal year '20, we're anticip, well, if you look at, we're looking at water losing about $550,000 in the coming year, having about $190,000 left at the end. Sewer would lose about $360,000 and be down to about $600,000 at year-end. And stormwater, which is probably in the best shape of the group, would be losing $187,000 with an ending balance of 800 and some thousand dollars. So the good news is, we do not necessarily need a rate increase. The bad news is, water is getting there pretty quickly. And the difficulty with water is water is governed by the PUC. So A, there is a more complicated process for doing a rate adjustment, that you have to meet all of the PUC rules. And secondly, the tendency because of that, because of both that and how the PUC evaluates your financial condition, is that the tendency is to wait until you really need a rate increase, and then to get something that would be more significant than you would feel comfortable with normally. Auburn, I think their last rate increase was 20%. Ours was 18%?
High, but I think it's closer than that.
Somewhere in there. And was quite a few years ago. 2013?
Yeah.
So that's something we should keep an eye on. I get one alternative that I think is hinted at in the budget message, is potentially, we could split it, split that rate increase over two years. There are some costs, however, associated with putting it all together for P, to meet PUC requirements. Revenues in water utility are down about $100,000. That's pretty much what we've been seeing. That's been the trend nationwide and here locally for some time, as people have moved to more water-conserving installations. So that's just, that's just been a long-term trend. Expenses are up about 2% or $115,000. Payroll and benefits for the same reasons, although to a lesser extent, as in the general fund. Debt service is up about 4.8%. Again, we have been trying to deal with our old infrastructure out there, plus dealing with some specific problems that the water utility has to come up with and deal with that have been impacting debt service there. Operating expenses are down slightly, as is capital outweigh. So again, rate increase is not necessary for the coming year unless we want to give some serious thought to doing two increases, one the coming year and one the year after, to ease it in on people a little bit. Sewer utility, again, revenues are down by about 2.1%. As water revenues decline, sewer revenues tend to follow right along because they are tied so closely together. And expenses are up about 1.9% or $115,000. Payroll is the big driver here, as you can see, at $240,000.
That's debt service.
Hmm? Excuse me, debt service. Debt service is up at $240,000. Again, for many of the same reasons, we're dealing with an old infrastructure, and we are also trying to meet requirements that the feds have placed on us for inflow infiltration, combined sewer overflows, and all of that other kind of stuff that has been mandated through the state to us. Payroll and benefits are up slightly. Operating costs are down slightly. Capital purchases are down because we're not buying the sewer cleaning machine this year. We paid that off.
That's correct.
And our treatment expenses are up. As you will recall, we share cost for the treatment plant. Our share is based on our flow, how much we send to the plant, plus how, the strength of the waste that gets to the plant. So that's, those are the factors that affect that. So again, no rate increases recommended there. Stormwater is, again, pretty much the same picture. Expenses are up 188%. Revenues are flat. Capital is up 30-some percent, 16%. Payroll's down slightly. Debt service is up, again, because stormwater is, again, dealing with those, many of those same issues that sewer fund is in terms of combined sewer overflows. And operating costs are up 4.5%. Obviously, we will have a whole session devoted to, mostly to utilities.
A week from today.
A week from today, so we can get into this in much more detail, and you can start considering some of the issues that need to be dealt with. As always, I guarantee you that I could not do this, in fact, I don't really do this. Heather does much of it, and her employees and the department heads put this all together. And I want to thank them for the hard work they've done, setting it up for the hard work that you get to do over the next four to six weeks as we try to put together a final budget. I do know it will not be exactly as presented here. You know, if you wanted to, you could just say, okay, that's fine, let's adopt the budget and go home. But I don't think that's where you folks are, and I wouldn't recommend you do that because there are some serious issues here that have to be dealt with, many of which are on the Capitol side of the House, given some of the Capitol needs that we're trying to address in the near future. So with that, any other questions?
Are you gonna go through your future considerations and conclusion?
I can. There's a number of, of obvious considerations that we need to keep in, in mind. One is, we do need to continue to watch what's happening at the state. There are some positive things that are being discussed there, primarily the revenue sharing, which isn't enough. There are other things being discussed at the state that are liable to have impacts on us as an employer. I know there is an awful lot of labor legislation that's being introduced and coming down, dealing with some things that we don't have to worry about because we already provide it, like, you know, sick leave and things like that. Other things that could affect workers' compensation and other costs. There's, there's been a lot of legislation introduced in that whole area this year. What else did I mention?
National growth, economic growth.
Economic growth? Who knows? We are now in year 10 of an economic expansion, and that is the longest, I believe, post-war economic expansion that the country has had. There are a number of potential concerns out there. Nobody knows how long this is gonna continue. Most people do not think we're gonna go in, back into a recession in the next year, but I think we're gonna have to continue to watch what's happening at the national level. Certainly, growth seems to have slowed a little bit. I think it's still in the 2% to 3% range, but it was over that for the prior year. And there's just a lot of uncertainty in the world these days between Brexit or no Brexit, and some of the emerging economies have been really struggling. China has been slowing down. Trade issues obviously are important. So I think we're gonna just have to keep an eye on that to see what's happening. And certainly, I, none of us want to see, to see us go back into a recession. 2010, 28, 29, 2010 was miserable. It's not an experience any one of us want to repeat. So hopefully, we will continue to see reasonable growth going forward that can help us avoid those kinds of very, very difficult decisions.
That's it.
Thanks, Ed. And Heather?
Thank you.
So we'll break until 7:00.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in which we are a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as I announced at the workshop before the meeting, we're going to start our meetings a little bit differently. I had a request from a constituent who wanted me to just welcome everybody to the city of Lewiston and let you know that we are the second largest city in the state, but the city with the biggest heart. So we're going to start with an update from the Lewiston Youth Advisory Council.
The Lewiston Youth Advisory Council recently heard a presentation by Lewiston's Deputy Planning and Code Enforcement Director Doug Green regarding the city's efforts to beautify Lewiston and to address, and to address trash concerns. He wants to have the youth council in the loop as the initiative moves, moves forward. As you know, the ELIAC has been facilitating a shine on Lewiston series to highlight Lewiston's positives. However, member Christine Chasse would now like ELIAC to take some time to shine a light on the topic of bullying. Christine is concerned about how many youth are bullied nationwide, and she has asked her fellow, fellow ELIAC members to do something about it. The group has decided to film testimonials, testimonials from people who have been bullied to demonstrate the negative impact it has on people's lives. In that regard, we have developed a link where people can share their story. Individuals who want to be considered for the video may go to lewistonmain.gov/bullyproof. We have named our effort, Humankind = Kind Humans: Bully-Proof Lewiston. And ELIAC member Damon DeWitt is designing a logo for our outreach. We also hope to eventually go into some local schools to talk to students about the impacts of bullying. In April, promotion will begin to invite Lewiston youth to apply for the ELIAC membership for the July 2019, 2020 year of service. Applicants must live in Lewiston or be a student at St. Don's or Lewiston High School or will be in the fall. Any questions?
Could we repeat the website again?
Lewistonmain.gov/bullyproof.
Thank you so much, Emma.
Yep.
Thanks, Emma. Councilor Marka.
I had a question. Do you have any data points, like, before the program starts and go back and revisit how many bullying episodes and so forth to see where the success levels are or will be?
We do not right now. Thanks, Emma. So we were having technical difficulties, is that still? So Dennis, can you give us a?
Yes, we, we are recording the meeting, but currently, it is not broadcasting on TV. We are broadcasting live on YouTube. So we are doing everything we can to try to get it working, but at this point, if you're, obviously, if you're hearing this and you're watching it from home, you're probably watching through YouTube and not through Great Falls TV.
Thank you. So we'll move on to an acceptance of the minutes of the March 5th and March 12th meetings. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor LaJoy. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. We'll now move into public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government that are not on the current agenda. And if you could just state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Heather Everly. I'm trying to be very trauma-informed, and I'm going to be sharing anonymous testimony from a young woman that came to me. So I wanted to give the opportunity to folks to either leave the room, or to shut off their television sets, or to skip this part in the recording, because there is some content that may be triggering. So, an anonymous woman from the class of 2010 Oak Hill High School has reached out to me, and she's speaking of her junior year experience at Oak Hill. Everything that I'm saying is direct quotations from her. "I just wanted to say, I believe you. Shane was my coach in high school, and he was inappropriate with students. He made me feel really uncomfortable."
Madam Mayor?
Because there's an ongoing investigation going on, I just want to clarify, make sure that we're... I don't know if city staff has a...
Is Chief O'Malley in the back?
Yes.
Do you have any advice on?
She's referring to this in the current Sabatius. I mean, I don't know.
The police department has refused, like, I saw them, and they refused to write a word down on paper, and I feel like this needs to go to public.
I believe she was told that she was needed first, and not that...
You, the Lewiston City Council is complicit. The Lewiston City Administration is complicit. The school board is complicit, so is Sabatius. "I quit the team and I started leaving school from a side exit to avoid him. He is a pervert and a predator to young girls."
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Marka.
Is this still being investigated by the Attorney General's Office?
Yes, the investigation is still on.
So, and that covers the entire state. I don't think it's appropriate to air personnel view, issues in this public setting.
"A young woman asked me to come forward. People are not listening. This is systematic. I wish I could get my friend to come forward. I think what happened to her would make a bigger impact. Yes, he was inappropriate with me, but still. She switched schools shortly after wrestling season. Coach Bouchard got my number from a teammate. He texts me a lot. My dad called him and told him to never contact me again. I went to the athletic director. I told Fairchild and wasn't taken seriously. I was unable to play sports senior year as a consequence. Thankful, all this is coming to light. Coach Bouchard would pair me up with teammate, would pair up teammates, so I was the odd one out. I was stuck wrestling him. He gifted me things, including a tennis racket. He tried to get me alone. He was preying on us, and we were just kids. I'm thankful we're not alone. As a sixteen-year-old, you don't realize how disgusting someone is until ten years later. Share my story, just please don't share my name." And those were her words, directly. I understand her fear in coming forward. I've been called Lewiston's Jezebel. Naysayers have attacked my reputation, and parental alienation has been used against me. People have offered my alienator support, further legal, furthering legal abuse in a system that relishes capital gain. They send my supporters to twisted alternatives of narratives of my life and my experiences when the only person who owns my narrative is me. I haven't yet shared my experience. This is not about me or my own trauma, or anyone's judgments of me, it's about safety and rebuilding our community. The women in our community, in our neighboring communities, in our country are often silenced. There are young women who have reached out to me, however, they have not come forward due to public safety concerns. We are navigating through sensitive matters in which every Lewiston elected official and the people that ran against them are complicit. Oak Hill High School repeatedly allowed a predator to sexually exploit minors, targeting
Can we do... Do we... Can you just review what the rules are around public comment period?
Sure. Actually, I don't know that I have a set... Does anybody have an agenda? Glenda, thank you. Thank you very much. The rules regarding public comment are attached to everyone's agenda. The city council meeting public participation guidelines. Members of the public, members of the public will be only... will only be allowed to address the council through the mayor if they are situated in front of the microphone or the podium. Comments from members of the public are limited to a maximum of five minutes per person per agenda item. The mayor and/or his or her designee may set different rules for public comments that may involve, may not be limited to restricting the time for each speaker or limiting the number of speakers. If people have written testimony, they should provide copies in advance. If a member of the public wishes to address the council on a matter that is not expressly stated on the agenda, the matter may be taken up at the end of the agenda under other public city business. All matters must be relevant and related to Lewiston City Government.
So I would say that as long as your comments are related to Lewiston City Government, which a large portion of what you've said so far has not been, you're more than welcome to continue.
Talking about the former mayor...
Who's not...
I understand that, but it seems pretty relevant to the community and the council, who you all are working with, the former mayor of Lewiston, and very relevant.
Madam Mayor, can I ask, so who determines if it's pertaining to Lewiston City Government?
The presiding officer, which would be the mayor, yes.
And I'm not going to gavel her, so...
"Where is the accountability of adults to protect our children? I stood here before testifying that I will do what it takes to protect our children. This includes calling out complicity. This council, Madam Mayor, Counselors Lyson, Penningill, Ray, LaJoy, Beam, Markot, City Administration, and our school board must take accountability, and they need to address how these individuals can safely come forward. If I could come forward and put myself at risk, then I believe you all can and should do your jobs. I abhor your letter to Lewiston citizens in which you push to move forward. First, we have systematic issues that must be addressed. There is racism rampant on our streets, and white people at power are standing center stage withholding space from the people who ought it be directed to. Within days, there was hate speech attached to utility pools near Bates College, and our police failed to call it for what it is. They said they are investigating due to an ordinance and not for what it truly is, active racism. Moving on, without addressing this hatred and listening to the people it affects the most is poignant pageantry, straight up a hazardous illusion of white privilege feigning to take action. Your duty is to Lewiston, and I ask each one of you to start honoring that and to stop sabotaging our city for political, for political power, influence, and capital."
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on issues? Thank you. Go ahead. Just state your name and address, please.
Charles Arthur Soul, 135 Batista Street. First of all, I do not like an attack on an individual who is not present in the room when they're attacking him. Secondly, Ms. Cludell, I believe that would have been a prime time to use your gavel and defend the honor of somebody who is not here to defend themselves. I think that was a misstep by you. Charles Arthur Soul, 135 Batista Street, Lewiston, Maine. It's a disgrace to attack somebody. I would like to ask the young lady, as she'll answer the question, did you get in touch with the mayor, ex-resigned, the mayor that just resigned, if he would like to appear here when you were attacking?
So we're not questioning other...
Understand.
...speakers. Thank you.
Have a good day.
My name is Melissa Dunn. I am a homeowner at 254 Blake Street downtown. Really excited about that still. I'm a community organizer. I'm here representing Lewiston United for Peace and Hope. When we think about power, privilege, and oppression, we think about... I think about institutional power. And what is institutional power? It's the authority to decide what is best for others, the authority to decide who will have access to resources, the capacity to exercise control over others. Since the events and events surrounding the resignation of our former mayor, I have heard and read quotes in the paper saying that we're now to move forward, and that we should have respect for everybody in the community, and that everybody should feel safe, and that it's not that... I don't think that it's anything we all want, but at the same time, we're elected officials, and we do play some roles in the events that played out last week. Some of the stuff about racism that shed light was referred to as commentary, and we're told that we can move forward. You know, as white power holders, you're all agents of oppression. And what is agent of oppression? Agent of oppression is agent of a system or institution. And back to like institutional power. Now, we as a community no longer need feel-good kind of politics. We don't need feel-good words. We don't need feel-good efforts when there's no progress. And we are at the mercy of agents of oppression. My life, the lives of my neighbors who are black and brown and poor are literally on the line. Now, unpacking the racist comments and other things that kind of shed light is bringing up centuries of pain. It's invalidating black survival and making a mockery of black people whose blood was spilled on our nation's grounds and still continue to be to this day. And this is just one way that racism has showed up in our community by racial jokes. But we've seen, we have seen kind of like how bad it can be. So now, we as non-black people need to work towards decolonizing empathy, black suffering, and black pain. Sharonda Brown, she's deputy editor of the Black Youth Project and a woman of color, says, "Our ability to recognize pain in others is at the core of our ability to feel empathy. If non-white people do not feel or react to pain in the same way as white people in the white imagination, then that affects how white empathy for others is formed, or whether it is informed at all." And I think when she speaks of this, she's speaking more of like physical pain, but I interpret it to be physical pain and internal pain, whatever it may be. Because we as non-black people do not understand the full impact of racialized comments making a mockery of black suffrage really has on people. She also quotes, "White supremacy's modus operandi is not only to deny the validity of clear evidence set before it, but is also to alter narratives in its own favor. And not just those with opposing views, but those who call themselves allies." We've seen it very much. Now, I really struggle with knowing my community needs space for healing and processing acts of terrorism, acts of hate, that black, brown, and poor folks face nearly every day on our streets and our schools and in their place of worship and in their place of work implicitly and explicitly. And yet, the way that we hold discussions around terrorism or white supremacy signs at a college do not and have not included downtown voices, downtown people. And yet, knowing the power dynamic present, which is white politicians, of which maintains their power over us, ordinary people, my people, my neighbors, poor, black, brown, are... And it's holding power over us, excuse me. Now, white politicians and people in positions of power are not what I ever wanted in my community, using opportunity as a photo op or just to show up, like taking space with broken promises with no real progress to end hate towards terrorism or hate. And like, I want to see action. That's what we need. So what I ask is that you always lead your work with a race, with a class, racial, and gender lens. And if you know something about a leader you sit amongst, speak up, address it, and follow through. Your seat is a privileged one, as it is us constituents who put you there. Speak up about race, confront it. Speak up about class, confront it, smash it, dismantle it, whatever you have to do. No more respectability. We have to have these conversations, because the summer is coming up, and I know we all anticipate that Kennedy Park is going to be like it is last year, where there's white folks pointing at a group of little black and brown babies saying it's their fault for the discourse in this community. And I don't want that. And not only that, I mean, there is obviously clearly signs that white supremacists are here. And they bank on poor people's lack of education to rule them in, to rule them in and say, like, it's the othering, it's the ostracizing. So we have to be intentional about prioritizing people and black voices, and we have to disrupt it and dismantle it. And if you need support in any way, like Lewiston United, we do anti-violence, anti-racism work. I'm happy to work with you, although, be honest, it's taxing as a brown person. But we have an obligation. Don't tell us to move forward. Don't tell my neighbors to move forward, because we got to address this as a community, and we have to speak up against hate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment period? So we'll move on?
Yes. So we... Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't have time to write something, so I'm just going to kind of wing this.
Can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Sass Lineiken. I live in Winthrop, but I organize in Lewiston and work with a lot of people that I love here. And I showed up today to ask you guys to please do something and say something publicly about what Shane Bouchard did. When he resigned, I was so excited. I told my son right away, and then played the video, listening to him take zero accountability, and then being thanked for his distinguished service. And he called black people farm equipment. So I'm just here to ask you guys to not just move forward, but name it for what it is. You have a huge population of black and brown people in your city. Please say something and do something.
Hi, I'm Christine. Where I live is kind of complicated. I live kind of between Lewiston and Leeds. It's complicated. But I didn't prepare anything. I don't think I'm going to be very articulate, but I'm with a group called Central Main Showing Up for Racial Justice. And Showing Up for Racial Justice is a national organization that has over 100 chapters all over the country, and it's specifically for white people to be organizing for racial justice. And we organize specifically, and we organize with all people, and we specifically try to get white folks to be organizing for racial justice, because we understand that it's in everyone's interest to end white supremacy. And also because we understand that, at the end of the day, as Melissa was saying, it's white power holders that continue the system of white supremacy. And so it's our job as white people to end white supremacy. Like, we absolutely cannot put this on black and brown people. And as someone who, you know, my main focus in life, I'm a community organizer, and my main focus is racial justice. I am seeing the racism and white supremacy in our community all of the time. I mean, I was on the phone with a friend of mine who is a Somali Muslim person, and she, after what happened in, I think in New Zealand, she's talking to me about how the mosque here has no windows, and the women and children are in the basement, and there's no exits. People are... She's telling me how that's a safety concern, because a mass shooting might happen there. Then you have posed the "it's okay to be white" posters. You've got, I mean, I can go on and on about the racism and white supremacy. That's how, if you look at the comments on Sun Journal articles, when, last summer with the, with what happened in Kennedy Park, people, there are very violent, volatile white people in our community that are making a really unsafe environment, and frankly, terrorizing people of color in our community. So, I want to speak to all white folks who are listening, that our group, Showing Up for Racial Justice, we have a Facebook page that you can like us. We meet every second Tuesday at the U Church in Auburn. I think we meet 6 to 8. So if anyone wants to join us. And I want to just really be very clear that as white people working for racial justice, we really need to follow the leadership of black and brown people. We do not know... We have to take initiative, right? We can't put it on black and brown people to tell us what we have to do and when we have to do it. You know, when we see, you know, racism, white supremacy happening, we have to go out. But it's really, we really need to follow the leadership for black and brown people and follow the initiatives that they say that we need to. We don't. There are so many really, like amazingly, amazingly, like some of the strongest leaders in our city that I've been organizing for 10 years, and some of the most amazing people of color leaders are here, and we need to support their work and follow their leadership. So that's what I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment period?
Okay, so we will note for the record that Counselor Beam has an excused absence this evening. We'll also note that the, on the printed agenda says that all roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Counselor of Ward 6, but since she is absent this evening, all roll call votes will begin with the Counselor of Ward 7. We will also note that Agenda Item Number 4 has been pulled from the agenda at this time and will be addressed at a future meeting when additional information is available on that topic.
Great. So Agenda Item Number 1?
Yes, so Item Number 1. Public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment to the Carlton Club, 25 Sabata Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to the Carlton Club, 25 Sabata Street.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor LaJoy. Any discussion on the council? To the public, back to the council?
Counsel from Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Agenda Item Number 2?
Item Number 2. Public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment to DaVinci's Eatery, 150 Mill Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to DaVinci's Eatery, 150 Mill Street.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Counselor Lyson, seconded by Counselor Ray. Any discussion on the council? To the public, back to the council. Call the roll.
Counsel from Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Agenda Item Number 3?
Item Number 3. Public hearing in first passage to contractually rezone the property at 111 Blake Street and 82 Pine Street from the downtown residential district to the Sontreville district. Requested action to approve first passage of the amendment to the zoning and land use code and map to contractually rezone the property at 111 Blake Street and 82 Pine Street from the downtown residential district to the Sontreville district, subject to a contractual agreement, and to continue the public hearing for final passage to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Counselor Lyson, seconded by Counselor Ray. Any discussion on the council? Are we going to get a...
You have a presentation, perhaps?
Good afternoon, good evening, Madam Mayor, and the constituents members of the city council. My name is Paul Grove Rowe. I'm a resident of Lewiston at 56 Tampa Street in Lewiston, Maine, and I'm speaking on behalf of the proposed rezoning amendment. I sit on the Board of Directors at Community Confets here in Lewiston. That is a cap agency which provides a variety of social programs... That is a cap agency which provides a variety of social programs in the tri-county area. And we're working specifically today on our housing programs. We assist people of low and moderate income in acquiring properties, in the modeling properties. And also, we're very interested in developing affordable housing stock for residents in our community, in our catchment area. And the proposal you have today is the product of a lot of hard work being done by my colleagues at Community Concepts and Avesta Housing. Kathryn Elliott, to my right, is very involved in developing the project. And Tom Platts of Platts Associates is involved, along with Ebbiel Pierce Russell, in the architectural design of the proposal. It's for 33 residential units. And the proposal basically is to rezone the parcel at 82 Pine Street and 110 Blake Street, I believe it is, to allow these 33 units to be developed. The property involved actually has a lot of personal significance to me, too. It was the home of my parents and my grandparents, and where I practiced law for several years. And I mention that because whatever values I've acquired for community service in my life, they're derived from my family. My father and my grandfather were physicians, and they routinely walked the neighborhoods in this area regularly, helping to meet the health needs of people of Lewiston. And I say that because I think what is going on in Lewiston today is extraordinary. There's a revitalization in our community. We are welcoming new Mainers and people of all ethnicities, all income levels, to a revitalized urban area. And what is special about this particular project is it would not just provide safe and affordable housing. It would also provide other amenities, which are key to bringing families and refurbishing the lifestyles of people who want to live in the Twin Cities. And as you know, unfortunately, over time, a lot of the housing in central Lewiston has significantly deteriorated. In my day job, I've been an attorney with the Attorney General's Office, and I advise the Maine Center for Disease Control and Prevention. And I worked on many cases with substandard housing and lead-poisoned housing here in downtown Lewiston. And this particular program, because it was designed, is very efficient. It will provide high-quality, very affordable, and safe housing. And certainly, my colleagues here can answer questions, technical questions in that regard. But without question, I am very supportive of this program. I should also mention, others are here, too. Dana Topman, the CEO of, Avest is here, as is the CEO of Community Concepts, Sean Yardley. And they also are very strongly in support of this program. We have a vision, over the next five to seven years, to develop a significant cohort of affordable housing in this area to meet the emerging needs of residents in the Lewiston Auburn area. And this community can be what it once was 150 years ago. It can be a haven for new Mainers and new people coming into our community. I was mentioning before the meeting how Lithuanians, Italians, Chinese, Jewish people, and then, of course, Irish and Catholic people have flocked to the Twin Cities. And now we have a whole new generation of new Mainers. This is an extraordinary opportunity to develop quality housing stock, which will benefit not only the residents who will be living in these units, but also make a meaningful step to improving the quality of life in the city of Lewiston. Thank you very much.
I'm Tom Platts from Platts Associates. Going to give you just kind of a brief overview of the project of Blake and Pine, and then Gabby's going to kind of take you through the drawings. I think the first slide she has up is, give you an idea of the location. It's a four-story building with three levels of living, one level of parking, 30,000 square feet of living area, 35 living units, 15 one-bedroom, 14 two, and six three-bedroom units. There are going to be seven affordable units and 20, I mean, opposite, seven market-rate units and 28 affordable units. For parking, right now, the statute doesn't require any parking to be on the site with your new ordinances. This building is 850 feet from the Park Street Garage, which would handle all of its parking. But the developers decided to provide 25 spaces under the building, and based on their
You did it!
We're up here.
You're all set?
I'm still going on my.
Hang on to it. Just a minute.
Sometimes it takes a few minutes or seconds to pop up.
So the property located at Pine and Blake, you'll see it circled in red on the screen. It's about half a block from Kennedy Park. And you can see other points located on the map. It's within walking distance of Forage, the library, the post office, and in an ideal location for a dense, living community.
Can I ask, what is this photo from? What year?
I think that is the 2012. So you'll see the property highlighted in pink, and the proposed contract zone is about half a block from the existing Santraville district, but it is in, currently in the downtown residential district. Currently, downtown residential requires about 1,200, 1,250 square feet per unit. Santraville requires, there's no, there's no restriction, and what we're proposing is 400 square feet per unit, to bring it to 35 units. We're also, downtown residential has a side and rear setback of 10 feet, and Santraville has no side and rear setback requirement, and we're proposing a four-foot side and rear setback. And this, some of these came about after we, Kathryn and I and city staff walked the neighborhood to look at existing characteristics of the design of the neighborhood. So many of the properties had a small front setback and a small side and rear setback. They were also pretty consistent through the neighborhood, was about three stories, and the first story typically elevated above the street by about, you know, three or four steps, half a story maybe. So one of the other things that we're proposing here is to, let's see, so to raise the building about 20 inches. So to pull it back from the street just a little bit and raise it up, making it more consistent with the neighborhood. As you'll see in this slide, this is, the gray area shows the new building footprint. So you can see that they're on Pine Street and Blake Street. Actually, Pine Street, I think, has about six feet from the sidewalk. Blake Street has about four feet. And then you can see that behind the building, kind of in, in the middle of the block, is a little bit of green space for the building. This is a proposed rendering of what the building will look like. We're facing the Pine Street side. You can see the overhang with the main entry that says 82 Pine Street, where someone that was walking in the neighborhood, that would be their primary entry, steps on the front and the ramp to, starting at the corner. And then, three stories on the Pine Street side, and then on the Blake Street side is where the parking level is. So you would enter, if you were driving to the site, you would enter on the Blake Street side at the lowest end, where there's about 25 spaces under the building. This is a floor plan of the proposed parking level. And there's a little bit of enclosed space, like bicycle storage, mechanical room space, an office, laundry, elevator, parking, and then recycling and stair tower. These are other developments that are in the neighborhood, on the same block, Healy Terrace, which I believe has 42 units?
32.
32, sorry. And then you'll see the Center for Wisdom's Women, which is the, on the right-hand picture. So the proposed building at Blake and Pine is kind of, it's a transition from the larger buildings that are very close by to the more residential. Here are some other examples of, you know, across the street from the property. This is directly across Pine Street. And these are buildings that are in the Santraville district currently, on the right-hand side at 60 Pine Street. And we're really trying to propose a design that works better for the neighborhood.
We're here to answer. Are there any questions you might have?
Questions from the council?
I just have some comments.
Sure.
Okay. First of all, I wanted to thank Community Concepts and Avesta and the design team for bringing forth this project. Just to give a review, this is a project that went to the, or actually, the rezoning component of the project. So we're really at a pretty beginning standpoint. We did have an executive session with you guys. We talked about the project. We anticipate this, going back to the planning board, for development review, where a lot of the technical issues, but I do like the renderings and now, because it's usually at a rezoning time, you don't really get to see stuff like that. So this is great. A lot of my constituents and people have said, there's just not enough affordable housing in this community. And we know it's expensive to, you know, and the mix of market and assisted housing, I think, is reasonable. I think, you know, we've got, you know, the density to me is, this is a place where we should increase density, or at least equal what's there in the neighborhood. So I think the consistency, I also like staff negotiating, saying, well, we're not, the new CV wouldn't require it, but what are you willing to do? Like the setbacks and stuff like that. So, and even the parking. I think that people in the neighborhood, regardless of where they live, are concerned about finding places to park. And I do think that providing the interior stuff is going to be valuable to your tenancy. I think it might be too much. I don't know. We'll have to take a look at that. But again, I think, to me, this is where we are, this is where the infrastructure is there already. You're cleaning up contaminated site, which is, you know, healthy to the neighborhood, and providing mixed-income housing, which is, you know, terrific, I think, in this community and really necessary. So thank you for doing it.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Counselor, Pat Gil, sorry.
So I got to say, the urban planner nerd in me absolutely loves this project. It's stuff like this that coincidentally got me involved in politics and being here. With it said, I don't support the project for a few reasons. So with it, you know, it's interesting, it was said that, you know, this project and projects like this will be a haven to draw people to Lewiston, which I agree with you, and it is something that we do need. But we're not doing anything to repair the existing housing stock that we already have here, which does include issues like the lead. My fear, what's going to happen, is people are going to move into this project to create vacancies in buildings that have lead issues, and then new people are going to move into those properties with lead issues. And they may or may not know that there are lead issues in those buildings, and that's a huge problem for me. You know, and again, we're not doing anything to remove this bad housing stock from the equation.[1797.32] equation. My limited developer information, everything I've, I've read, it's cheaper to rehab than it is to do new construction nationally. And again, I'm, I'm not in the business, but it's information that I've read. You know, I completely agree that density is an issue that plagues Lewiston. We have very low density historically. Something like this would fix it. You know, so again, it's not, it's not something I can get behind. And lastly, with spot zoning, my time on the planning board, we almost never did spot zoning. It has issues. While it's a gorgeous building, the pictures you showed, it doesn't fit in the area with all the, the old style of construction and I fully get that building it. You're not gonna be able to put up a building for, under the price tag that you're already at. So I, I understand that. But those are just some of the reasons that I, I can't get behind it. But thank you.
If I could answer maybe a couple of those seem like questions. In terms of rehabbing existing buildings, in some cases, you're right. I think one of the problems in that neighborhood, you can't rehab a small building for the kind of money you can build a new building with this kind of density. It just won't happen. And the other thing I, I would maybe put before you, I would agree that, you know, all these houses that are laden with lead are a real problem for the community. And I would also agree with you, I don't see anything happening to those. And I, I think that by building more of these types of buildings, you're gonna create some competition, that these landlords who have buildings with lead in them are gonna have to make a decision if they want to keep their properties valuable. And that's to compete with these new, clean, environmentally friendly buildings that are going up. And it may even help to raise their rent so that they can do it. But without the competition, they're never gonna do it.
And I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I don't see it happening. I, I can hope alongside you that it, that it will, but I don't, I don't.
I guess I, I feel like it won't happen if there's no, if nobody drives it.
And I, I agree with you and I, I think it's something that as a council, we should do to take some action and actually getting something done about the lead issue.
I have a question for the chair. This will go to the public and then come back to us, because I have a prepared statement for when it comes back to us. But I'm glad that Councilor Pettingill mentioned spot zoning, because I heard that from the presentation and I, I really have a hard time with spot zoning where this is not contiguous to the rest of CV. And you probably saw me leafing through my book when I heard that there was no parking requirements. I'm wondering, is that because if it goes CV, there's no parking requirements where the parking discussions we've had previously was because it was DR? And the discussions about having off-site parking that would fulfill the requirement for this project, meaning Oak Street Park?
In late 2018, there was a change to the, to the parking requirements that allowed the parking requirements for any development to be met if it was within a certain radius of a municipal parking garage. And due to the location of this particular building, it is within that radius. It's less than a quarter of a mile from Oak and Park, which is a Lewiston-owned parking facility that does have capacity to sustain the additional spots.
When did you say this was done?
Late last year. And that's the reason that there is no parking currently required to be on the site with the building. But due to the concerns of the neighborhood and also what we've found to be best for our residents, we do want to provide some parking on the site because we think that will make it a better building for everyone.
So it's not a condition of no parking requirements, which is what I heard earlier.
No, I don't think what I was saying is that. There are currently no onsite parking requirements for this building, as Catherine makes.
Because of that ordinance.
Because of that new ordinance. The, you have to be within, I think, thirteen-hundred-and-fifty feet of a parking facility. We're within eight-hundred-and-fifty feet. However, we're providing the parking anyway. I think that's what I was saying.
It's a quarter-mile and I thought it was this year, but that's neither here nor there.
Dave Pettiger is here and he can answer any questions about the parking, if you want it clarified.
I think Catherine did a great job. Uh, no, I mean, you folks adopted a new ordinance back in November, I think it was. That's where you relax the standards, where you can be within a quarter-mile. Parking requirements used to be like two-point-two. It was based upon the number of bedrooms. That's been reduced to one-point-one. So, you know, do they have to meet the parking requirements? No, because they're within a quarter-mile. Are they adding parking to the site because they have the ability to? Yes. So they're, it's kind of the best of both worlds from a parking perspective. They could have come forward to you folks with a project and have any parking and would have satisfied the zoning requirements.
Dave, so the quarter-mile parking requirement put into place as an ordinance that covers all residential zones, including downtown residential and Centreville?
Correct.
And for those parking spots being satisfied by the Oak Street Garage, those are not assigned parking spots, correct?
Correct, okay.
Okay. So there will just be, as it currently stands, given the card through City Hall?
Correct. They would, they would pay the permit price and have the ability to park in the lot or the garage, but there are not assigned spaces.
And that is because we are?
It's because our bond, our bonds are tax-exempt.
Okay.
And when you're tax-exempt, you're limited on the ability to set aside too much of the project for any one other entity.
Okay.
Private activity, as Heather leans into my ear.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion on the council before I send it to the public?
I have some of the same concerns as Councilor Pettingill and Councilor Markot. However, in listening to some of your explanations, it's starting to make a little more sense. But I'm looking for, you know, our citizens, our constituents and the tax dollar return. And I'm wondering what percentage that would be in regards to a return to, to our citizens. I'm just worried about higher taxes and everything. And, and I'm looking at what the percentage would be of return if we allow this to go through, if, if there's anything like that.
Are, are you asking about the tax increment funding?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So the, the, we will be coming forward with a request for a TIF at a later date. That request would be for a fifty percent reduction of the annual taxes for a period of either fifteen or twenty years. The estimated amount that that would generate in annual taxes would be about twenty-five thousand dollars per year. The current revenue generated by the two parcels in question is about thirteen-hundred dollars per year. So there would be, in, in year one, you would be seeing more revenue hand over hand than was previously generated on these parcels in the last six years that they've stood vacant, which is one of the reasons that we're excited to move forward with this project, because we think that it has significant economic benefits for, for numerous parties.
Thank you for your explanation.
And actually, and conversely, if you think of what Catherine's saying the value is, the twenty-five thousand is half of what you'd eventually get. And if you only built ten or eleven units there, you would probably, you would get a third of that, which means you'd still, you'd be getting less than you'd ever get with this kind of density.
I guess, I guess that's what I was looking at in comparison as to the lesser or more.
If you built ten units, it's gonna be at least a third of the value of this.
The thirty-five units are currently at an estimated value, based on what the assessor stated, of about one-point-six million dollars. So if you start halving the number of units within that building, then the dollar amount that you're levying in taxes would go down significantly.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just to clarify, the, what we're voting on tonight is just the rezoning of the building?
That's correct. There are, there are. There are a number of steps still required. Obviously, this is the first step, which would be rezoning. The other steps would involve, number one, a site plan review and approval by the planning board, where they would look at the details of the, of the project, similar to some of the information being presented tonight. And then the final step, or I'm not exactly sure on the timing of this, this one and the, and the site plan review, would be for the council to consider a development agreement with the project that would cover things like the anticipated or projected TIF and any other issues that need to be addressed between the city and the developer.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make a comment about the spot zoning. I mean, this is a contract zoning. So this is, you know, that, the whole issue of spot zoning doesn't really come into play.
When we have, what used to be called conditional zoning?
Yeah.
I don't know why the name changed, maybe because it sounds better.
I asked David that.
But we're seeing this populate all across the city and.
It has been for fifteen, twenty years.
We don't, we don't need to escalate it. I don't mean to take your time, but I did have something.
Before we go to the public?
Before we go to the public.
Yeah, well, I've just, you know, as a professional planner, I mean, spot zoning is, is when you, if you brought that zone without being able to issue either a contract or conditional zoning. So it's really, to me, a non-issue.
So you're telling me spot zones are just illegal by their nature?
It's, you're conditional zoning. They're entered in agreement. And in, in some cases, they are making it more, applying more stringent criteria than would, would, would be the case if it were a, a spot zone to CV. We can ask things. We can ask concessions on design, things like that, that you can't in a strain zoning, which would be a spot zoning.
And the other thing about this site, which is unfortunate, I mean, for the city, for everybody, with the size of this site and a half a million dollars needed in hazardous remediation, it's unlikely any small unit would ever be built on it. I mean, it just, unless the city wanted to put in the half million dollars and clean it up so somebody could build, but then that.
On a federal grant.
What's that?
On a federal grant, so it's not city dollars.
Right. But I'm saying, you just can't do it privately.
With respect to some of the numbers that were bandied about, yeah, it sounds great that we would get twenty-five thousand, which is half, and someday we'd get fifty thousand, fifteen or twenty years from now, which is a long way off. But I attended the planning board meeting where someone suggested there'd be fifty-six student, school-aged children. And the rebuttal was, well, our familiarity is more like thirty. But even when you take thirty and figure out the back math on how much it's going to edu, cost the city of Lewiston to educate those students, not even including the state, there's a net deficit to this project. So that's what I'm concerned about.
Of course, that would be.
And I'll say more to, I'll say it more to eloquently when I read my prepared statement.
I would just say, that would be an assumption that every family that moves in here is moving from out of town, which, which experience shows that's not what happens.
And we just heard that, you know, there'd be, maybe some relocation, but those properties would be backfilled. So we're, we're still looking at an impact of Lewiston, not only in schools, even though that's where the biggest impact is, there's a cost to all of the other services that the city provides. And, and with this in the density and one particular zone, and it's one particular school zone, I don't know which one it is, that may be Montello. And I believe that recently, someone in the school system complained that there was just no more room at the end at Montello.
So I think it actually would be the new school, just FYI. To the public. Does anyone want to speak on this item? So can you just state your name and address first, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, I'm Shanna Cox, one-nineteen Ash Street. This property would be a block and a half behind me and to my rear, so it's truly in my backyard. I am thankful for Councilor Markot for bringing up the discussion of children and the increase of children in our community. I brought two of them with me tonight because I think the education they get in this room is as important as the education they're getting in their classroom. Our schools are the only schools in the state that are still growing. And while some view that as a concern, I for sure know that it is an economic development boom for the state and we are the only place that is providing children in a way that, that we cannot get statewide. We cannot birth our way out of the workforce development problem. So strictly from an economic standpoint, the opportunity to house families in my backyard and make sure that they have a safe place to live that's lead-free and not just lead-safe, which is what rehabbing does, is an opportunity that I wish every family could be extended. In addition to that, I spoke to a friend of mine who works at Trinity during the day. There's two families there with young children, a month or so old, who are homeless and spending every single day there. And so when we wonder what kind of family will move into affordable housing that's built in my neighborhood and is, is made in a mixed-income project, I can tell you it's families that need it desperately. And if they are so lucky as to move from another apartment building in my downtown neighborhood into this beautiful and safe house, then they should be lucky to get into a rehab department that has been made, made lead-safe. And those families are families that are already here in our community. And if we were lucky enough to bring others in from outside of our community to come here and be educated alongside my students and their friends, I think that'd be fantastic. I can't say enough about what this would mean in my backyard and what it would mean for my family and for my community. And so I say yes, yes, in my backyard, to a project that would bring safe, affordable housing to a community that has not nearly enough of it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Frances Eens. I live at three sixty-one College Street. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, for, for considering this project. I'm here wearing a few different hats. One of them is as a Bates professor in the Environmental Studies Department and having done a lot of teaching and community engagement work, both with healthy neighborhoods, who many folks who are here tonight to speak are also affiliated with. But I'm here, because I hear from my students every day about the kinds of cities that they want to live in when they graduate from Bates. And I know that it's been a conversation for years in Lewiston about ways to keep Bates students around. And the things that they consistently tell me that they want are walkable communities, dense communities, places where they can get around by bike, by car, or without a car, sorry, by bus and on their two feet to get to places that they want to go. And, and this kind of density is consistent with that kind of a neighborhood where people see each other out on the street. It's, it's really a community, not a place where people just drive. So I say that. I also say that there's been a tremendous amount of work, as many of you all know, with the Healthy Neighborhoods and Choice Neighborhoods Initiative planning in this downtown community. And consistently, the thing we hear the most is around lead-free housing and housing that's also affordable and well-managed. It's, it's all of these things. And this development, while certainly thirty-five units is not, I agree, Councilor Pettingill, gonna solve the lead issue, this is a step in the right direction and hopefully an indication of the kind of work that will come. And we had, I've had hundreds of people show up for community forums as part of this planning work over the last year. And so while I certainly can speak for only myself, I certainly want to amplify the voices that cannot be here tonight, either because of childcare or work obligations, to say that there is such a need for housing like this and, and this is definitely a step in the right direction. So thank you.
I'm Clara Tammany. I'm the Executive Director of the Center for Wisdom's Women, which is right next door to this proposed development. I live in Auburn, but within a year, I'll probably be living at one forty-three Blake Street, which is our Sophia's House project that you might have heard about, that we're developing in an old convent. We actually looked at that property to see if we could buy it for our project. Vesta beat us to it, but now I'm really thrilled that we can partner with them in helping place residents in this new development. Just today, there was a young woman in my office who has been out of Wyndham incarceration since December. She's maintaining sobriety. She's been couch surfing and living with parents in a dysfunctional household because she can't find a place to live. And that happens nearly every day for us, that I run into or know of someone, particularly a single woman, who does not have a safe, affordable place to live. And if they have children, their choices are lead, lead and bug-infested buildings. So I am really thrilled that this is gonna happen. They're gonna do it better than we ever could. And the combination of our place and theirs, I think, will be perfect because women graduate from Sophia's House will be able to transfer into a place like this and have some sustainable, good, safe. and have some sustainable, good, safe, lead-free, well-managed place to live. So that's, that's one place I speak from. The other is, I've, I've lived a few other places and always come back to Maine, but one that I really enjoyed was Frederick Maryland. And I was there for about nine years. It had also been a city that collapsed and was seeing hard times. And in the bicentennial urban renewal movement, they were able to build a flood control project that diverted the waters that always flooded the town so that it was livable again. And this pre-Civil War town had high-density and low-density buildings within walking distance of the main street. For us, it would be Lisbon Street. And that place was vibrant nearly 24 hours a day with people of all races, ethnicities, ages, going to restaurants and shops and concerts and theater and a vibrant school system. And they all could walk and from safe, affordable housing and mixed housing. They weren't all affordable, but mixed. And, and I'm just thrilled that this is mixed housing. And right next to us in Healy Terrace, on the other side, there's a building that has about the same density. And that was a rat trap of a building before it was renovated that caused all sorts of problems. Now, it's a building with life and with people living in it who are happy and healthy. And I see the same thing here. So I'm, I'm really grateful to Avesta for walking the neighborhood and talking to all of us who could be partners in this project to develop it in a way that it works for everyone.
My name is Linnea Hawkins. I live on Maple Street. I am a current holder of a Section Eight voucher, largely thank you to Avesta. So about six years ago, I was in the D V shelter in Auburn, desperately trying to find somewhere to live. Section Eight sounds like a good thing until you start looking for apartments in this area. I've had landlords hang up on me. I've gone to look at apartments to have a landlord give it to somebody who can pay, pay full rent. So any opportunity we have to create more affordable housing is a good idea in my mind. To the comments about the lead issue, if people from lead-infested buildings have an opportunity to move into a place like this, it leaves the building empty. It might be a way to encourage some of these landlords to take that opportunity to remediate and get rid of that lead while they have the apartments empty, so they don't have to worry about rehousing people or going through eviction processes to get them out so that they can, because landlords have done that. I want the people in City Council to really think about the lives this will impact. This looks like a beautiful building. It looks like it was very well thought out. Doing a leeway from the street when they didn't have to, putting in parking when they didn't have to, seems very thought out and very concerned about the community itself, which isn't something we see a lot of from a lot of developers. We see them come in by buildings, rent them out for whatever they can get, and don't reinvest in our community at all. And to me, this seems like a reinvestment. Yes, there, there's a possibility of a TIF, but what we'll be getting back even with that TIF is a heck of a lot more than we're getting now. So take a good look at the ways and balances there. No, it's not a, it's a Band-Aid solution. It's one step towards where we need to be, but it still seems like a good step from where I'm sitting.
Hi, my name is Gina Moore. I live at 1905 Lisbon Road here in Lewiston. For three years now, I have lived in transitional housing because I cannot afford rent in this area and there aren't enough affordable housing. So I'm asking you to please move forward with this zoning change. There's people like me who are filled in motels around this city that can't find any affordable housing. So please go forward with us. Thank you.
Hi, Kirsten Walter. I live in North Yarmouth, but I work right across the park at the St. Mary's Nutrition Center at 208 Bates Street and have been working in downtown Lewiston for 20 years. We're celebrating the 20th year of the Community Gardens, which is amazing. So we, you know, we, I've been in this community for a long time and have seen the impact of housing, whether it's when we're out in our community gardens, when we're serving people who need food in our food pantry, or as a property owner in downtown at 208 Bates Street. You know, St. Mary's taking the initiative to occupy that building to make sure that we didn't have, you know, a historic building being vacant in the downtown and recognizing how important it is to invest our resources and time and hope into the downtown. And I'm bringing a couple of different lenses. One is that experience. Also, we have a lot of experience with public health and thinking about what are the root causes of health. And we see every day that housing is one of those critical root causes. It's backed up by tons of research, but we see what that looks like in our community. And we know that safe and secure housing is absolutely the foundation for stable and secure and prosperous neighborhoods. Without safe and secure housing, we cannot achieve any of our other goals around economic development, workforce development, or prosperity. In contrast, poor quality housing has so many ripple effects, whether it's lead poisoning and asthma and other health problems that can be lifelong for our residents, or the impacts that has on educational attainment or employment. You know, if you're a student, whether you're a six-year-old at Longley Elementary School or a community college student, as an adult, if you're trying to study when, you know, the heat isn't working, when there's pests, when there's contaminants in your home, you know, it is really hard to, to, you know, move forward on your own personal goals. And let alone the stress that comes from poor housing. I know even when I have minor issues in my housing, how that can upset everything in my day. And I see how critical it is to provide that safe and supportive and stable housing. But also, we are all looking to see, how can we have residents, particularly in our downtown, but everywhere, be more engaged citizens? And it is so hard to engage in other issues in your community if you're worried about your housing. And also, if you're in a house that, or housing that tells you you're not valuable or that you can't have pride in. So being able to go home to a safe place that is beautiful and that tells you that you are valuable as a person can do so much for people's, you know, sense of self and their sense of place and connection to our community. And, you know, we have all heard this, the staggering statistics about lead in our community, but I have to say it out loud again. You know, having three times the state average for childhood lead poisoning is a crisis. And we know this. And there has been so much good work done by partners and the city to recognize that it's a crisis and that we have to do something about it. But the many things we need to do, rehab is one of those things, and remediation is one of those things. But it is, we have to use all the tools in our toolbox, and new housing is one of those tools, particularly so that we can have places where people can go so that we can start thinking about strategies for, for rehabbing other buildings and, and thinking about the ones that are, to Tom's point, worth rehabbing versus ones that aren't. I'm not going to talk much longer. I just had notes because I always get nervous if I'm, even though I have been here many times. You know, so I think, I wanted to just take us back for a minute to 2000. Not a lot of people were in this room at that time, but I see like several familiar faces. When there were several partners at the table that decided to invest in housing on Maple and Blake and in the B Street Community Center. And there had not been new housing investment in the downtown for almost 40 years, other than like the replacement of a building that had burned. And that was leadership from the Housing Authority, the Lewiston Housing Authority, the City, State Housing Authority, and St. Mary's. And it was an initiative saying, we have to be creative, we have to have some courage and take initiative. And what happened after that was a domino effect of other investment. We saw more housing on Maple Street. We saw senior housing on Birch Street. We saw CCI come in on, you know, both with their headquarters, but also with senior housing. We saw others, including St. Mary's, decide to invest in the Wallace School Building, the Healy Building. So that ripple effect is exactly what we need again now. And it does take certain initiatives like this one, even if it requires creative thinking, including zoning changes. And I think the, the last thing I, I want to say, like reinforcing what Shanna said, but our state has not only a brain drain, but we are the oldest state in the country. And every other municipality is like digging in, trying to figure out, how do we get young people to stay and how do we get families to move here? And so I just encourage, encouraging us to say, like, the solution to our current economic state, but also our future, is investing in those families and attracting them here. And, you know, we're a direct neighbor to this proposed property. We're, we own property up to Pine Street on Blake Street, all the way, the whole block from, well, now Sophia's House owns it, but, you know, from Walnut into Pine. And, you know, imagining this right across from our community garden and, you know, it's, it feels like a perfect fit when we have been seeing this, this vacant lot for so long and seeing what it says about our community, that we're not able to make this investment in this critical downtown location. It fits in really well, thinking about how close it is to Lisbon Street and all of the large buildings that are centered around the park. That's exactly the kind of urban design that Frances Eens was speaking to, that we want, to be able to say, let's really invest in the density in that area and, and then be able to think what appropriate development looks like across that. So thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Amy Smith. I live in Portland. I have 13 affordable units on Howard Street here in Lewiston and work at a nonprofit here at Healthy Home Works. I just wanted to speak to the lead and rehab versus building new comments that were made previously. So a lot of people here know me. I love the old triple-deckers. That's kind of my specialty. The kind of people and the kind of money that it takes to sort of find, embrace, and really rehab a triple-decker are, it's very different from an Avesta who's going to come in and do brand-new building. They're going to do it quickly because they don't have to figure out how to sort of sequence the renovations so they're not displacing people, to Linnea's point. And there is such a shortage of decent housing here that there, there are people on waiting lists across the city just trying to get into housing who already live here. And so I just want to go on record saying, yes, you're completely right, Councilor, that it's, it is cheaper to rehab than to build new. But when you add the cost of the lead abatement, that really starts to jack it up. So we have to kind of creatively put together these programs. They're offered by the state. We've got the CDBG money. But it's, it's, they're, they're small projects. Rehabbing the existing is a different set of people. And when we talk about how we're going to have people staying in Maine, young adults, young professionals, those too are the people who would be interested and potentially able to invest in a triple-decker and become owner occupants. So I just think that there are so many different ways to skin this cat, but just wanted to make sure everybody here understands, there are tons of people in Lewiston with kids in the schools who are just desperately looking for decent housing. And an Avesta project makes this happen so fast. And that'd be great if some people were able to relocate there, and then we could help to rehab the buildings that, that they're moving out of and then, you know, create the housing that we all need. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Craig Sattlemeyer. I live at 75 Maple Street in Lewiston, also involved with Healthy Neighborhoods, also involved with housing in the neighborhood. And I think the, the first thing I'd like to share is just a brief story about someone who I think I've learned more from than anyone. Her name's Nancy Glant. Has lived in this neighborhood for much of her life. She worked in the mills. She worked at Libby Mill. She worked at the Bates Mill. She worked at NAP Shoe. And she lived in a lot of very unsafe, very poorly managed properties for, for much of her life. Much, I, I met her when she was, I think she was in her, her early 50s when we first met, back in 2004. And she lived in properties that she'd always have to begin, as soon as she moved in, cleaning because of, you know, the state that they were in. She lost her home twice to fire. And, you know, would be temporarily homeless. We'd have to find a place for her to, to move to. We'd help remove her stuff. She'd often lose all her stuff. After being displaced by two fires, she moved into another building that, after she moved out of it, was soon condemned and just demolished. Also a building that had many problems with it and, and poor management. And where she got to move into in 2009 was the senior housing on Bates Street that Community Concepts developed with, not precisely the same, but similar funding, you know, mechanisms that, that we're talking about here. It is a very attractive, well-managed property that gives Nancy, you know, a person who worked hard all her life and doesn't have a lot of money to show for it, but is, is a great contributor to our community. She, she finally had a, a safe place to, to rest her head at night, and she's still there. And I share her story because I want to make the point clear that, you know, Nancy is not, Nancy and Nancy's income is not the reason that so much housing in, in the neighborhood is deteriorated. And she's not the reason that we have the challenges that we do. A lot of our housing is old. A lot of our housing has been neglected. And what we need to be doing is addressing that, that problem. We need housing to replace what's there. Zach, I, I hear your point about the concerns with lead. I think everyone here really shares those concerns about lead. But we, we need a place for people to go. Either housing that's permanent, replacing that, or at least we need a place for people to move so that we can renovate these buildings when they're empty. But we've demolished over 200 units, I believe, between just 2004 to 2016. We've been, generally, we've been, sorry, units, that might be, hm?
Two sixty-two.
Two hundred and sixty-two units were demolished in that time period. Generally, we're taking more units offline than, than we're adding. And so we're already up against that reality, that we're losing units. We need places for people to go. If we're going to save them and rehab them, we need a place for them to go. Our vacancy rate is extremely tight right now. It's between zero and 3%, sort of depending on which segment of the market you're looking at. But across the board, no matter, we've been doing, you know, dozens of studies, whether it's anecdotal from those of us who work in housing, who have people walking in our door saying, please, I mean, people, you know, many, many of them, both adults, working, paying good money, still not finding decent, safe places to live. Many of them that would qualify for the, the affordable units or others that would be interested in the market rate, but, you know, just want a place that doesn't, you know, where the roof doesn't fall in on them at night, where they have heat reliably. These people need a place to live where they can sustain their work, do, do well in school. And then we need to figure out, you know, what to do with the remaining housing stock. But we can't, it's kind of impossible to reasonably renovate it in a way that's safe if, if it's full of people. And, and some of this stuff, like the building that Nancy lived in, it's just, it's just going to end up getting demolished because it's been neglected for so long. Nationwide, there, there is an affordable housing crisis in all different kinds of cities. It's not unique to us. What we need to, I think, recognize is, is the reality of this situation. And, and what we need to be, we need to, we need to be able to differentiate what is, you know, good housing and not good housing and not generalize it based upon where it's being developed or where it's located. That is, oh, it's in a bad neighborhood, quote unquote, therefore the housing itself must be bad. The projects that Kirsten mentioned, the row houses, The projects that Kirsten mentioned, the row houses on Maple Street and Blake Street, the senior housing on Bates Street, the Healy Terrace, the Birch Hill Housing, we've had a number of very positive, very exciting, quality, well-managed, typically, you know, managed by highly competent nonprofit organizations, such as Community Concepts, and in this case, Community Concepts will be the owner, Avesta will bring their development and management capacity to the table. But these are projects that I, you know, once they're developed, people see them and they're impressed by them. When they see them, they say, oh, look at this, you know, part of the neighborhood, it's really, it's really picking up. You can see that there is an increased sense of pride. For the work that Healthy Neighborhoods has been doing, I've been, we've been doing outreach both to renters, but we also did a lot of outreach to homeowners and small business owners in the neighborhood. And what I heard consistently from them, what I did not hear from anyone, was that we don't need to replace any of our distressed housing. I never heard anyone say, you know, we don't need better places for people to live. Everyone said they want to see stuff get fixed up, and, you know, the businesses and homeowners in particular said, you know, things need to look better. And that's an example of what a project like this does, for the neighborhood immediately, but, you know, for our community more broadly. Pine Street is a street that people travel all day long. I have toured many of the other developments that Avesta has been responsible for. They do a very good job with their properties. I think we're lucky to have them at the table, and I appreciate the comments and the, you know, the scrutiny to which we apply to a contract rezone. I think it's good to go through that process, and I think that this is a net benefit for our community. So, thank you for considering it, and thank you for listening to me.
Hello, my name is Aiden Abu, and I work for Community Concepts, and I'm the family advocate for choice neighborhoods. And I'm here because of, I support this project, Avesta, and part of that is, like, I grew up in Lewiston. Like, funny thing is that, you know, the building where this project's taking place, my brother used to live there, like, before it got burned, like, when he moved out, that's when it burned down, I guess, but, and, like, I hear from residents all the time that, you know, like, they can't find, like, you know, affordable, better housing in the street streets neighborhood. And, you know, like, right now, like, my aunt's kids, like, we were just at the hospital yesterday, and, you know, like, we were there for the second time, because the first time they found, like, high lead, like, tests in their blood, and they were getting tested for the second time yesterday to, like, check whether it gone down a little bit. And like, that's the kind of, like, you know, like, you know, things that residents are facing in this neighborhood, and that there's a need for new, like, lead-free housing. And right now, like, the building that, you know, our target building is Maple No, and, you know, that building, like, there's elderly people that live there, and like, and they mostly, one of the residents lives, like, second floor, and he's an elderly, and like, there's no, like, accessibility in the building, and like, he has a hard time, like, you know, going up the stairs. And also, like, the management is really bad, like, like, last time he was telling me that he lost his keys, and they shot them thirty dollars, like, for a new one, and he was really pissed about that, like, and he was, like, urging me to help him find, like, a new, like, you know, unit in this neighborhood, which is really hard to find. And like, and like, there's a lot of, like, one-bedroom, like, apartments, like, that's incorporated in this development. And like, the issue, like, it's not about the schools being overcrowded, or like, more families moving. Like, people are going to move out either way, whether you build, like, new housing or not. So, like, you know, it's better for them to live in a, like, lead-free housing than stuck where they are and making no progress. Like, and you can also, like, you know, if the schools are overcrowded, you can, like, make the schools bigger, there's always something to do, like, you know, we can always progress the, like, there's no reason, like, you should put a dead end on progress. So, like, on top of that, I would say, like, you know, it's, like, mostly, like, what's the point of, like, having, like, schools while the children that attend those schools are, like, lead-infected, or they're lead-poisoned? So, like, you know, and we all know that the effects that lead can have on children, and like, their education, and how their brain develops, and that, you know, and this, like, new housing is totally something that would, like, is much needed within the community, and that, you know, we should, you guys should totally consider it, because you're the decision-makers, and the decision-makers are supposed to, like, do, or like, make the decisions that are better for the residents who live here and that are being impacted by it. And, yeah, so, on top of that, I would say, like, that, you know, Lewiston, like, it already has, like, not all the housing are bad, like, there's good housing also, and they could use, like, more better housing also. So, yeah, thanks.
Hi, I hate to speak in public, but we always say that we want to improve the community, but then when it comes to make decisions that could impact a lot of people's lives, we find issues, small issues, that I think with time, we could fix them. I did a lot of work with Healthy Neighborhoods for Avesta, I walked through a lot of buildings that, it made me very sad. I fell on one of those buildings because I was doing the work to help. I want you, Counsel, to put yourself on those people's shoes, you know? Imagine living in a house that you have no heat, that it's full of bedbugs, it's lead-poisoned, and you don't even know that it's lead-poisoned. Let's have faith that the project that Avesta is implementing, it could lead to other projects, that could lead to many buildings to be renovated, that many people would have a place to call home, to sleep, to be able to feel that, you know, they're safe, they don't have to be on the streets, on the code. It's not humane. No one should be sleeping on the code. No one should not have a house. So I think you guys, I ask you guys to put yourself on those people, on the community shoes. If you guys want to make a change, if you guys want to impact, if you want to cause an impact on the community, you should approve this project, because I think it's really, really important for us to have new housing. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ashley Medina, I live at two fifty-two Blake Street here in Lewiston. So I wasn't planning on speaking today, but how can I not with all these wonderful, you know, people coming forward? I feel like, living in the neighborhood, and knowing, having friends and family in the neighborhood, I've heard a lot of stories of, and even experiences of my own, about the housing here in downtown Lewiston. Kirsten said something that really, you know, resonated with me, about how living in poor housing conditions can really take an effect on your mental health, and that is true. I was living on Horton Street, going to school, working, taking care of my kids, and there was bedbugs where I was living. Waking up every night to my children crying because they're getting bit, not getting good sleep, not only does that make myself as a parent feel like I'm failing them, but it affects their, it affects their education, it affects the way that they perceive themselves because they're getting made fun of at school, because they're getting bit up. Also, it affected me as far as, and I'm sure other people can, you know, relate, it was hard to go to school and focus on my education when I had all these other things that I had to stress about. I know that there's people, actually, somebody that moved into that same building when I moved out, came to me and asked me if there was bedbugs when I was living there, I said, yes, that's why I left. And she said, okay, well, you know what? He told me, the landlord told me there was no bedbugs. So she gave all the money that she worked hard for to move into that place, just to find out a couple nights in that there was bedbugs, so she had to start over again. I know there are families that have had to start over three, four, five times, because they move into these places that they, that they say there's no bugs, there's nothing to worry about, but here they are having to start over. When you're already in poverty, that's not easy. Also, you know, there's, I know people that, you know, want to move out of their housing because their children are having issues with lead, with mold, their landlords aren't doing anything about it. They act like it's not a big deal, yeah, because they're not living there, but if it was them, I know for a fact that would be very different. So I just wanted to voice my, you know, my experience and share a few stories from other people that I know, and I think that this project is definitely needed, and I think it'll make a very big difference, because I know that, you know, if I was to move from that situation into that new place, I would be very, very happy and excited, and hoping that these other places can also, you know, when, if they do get empty, you know, people will come and make the changes that need to be made to make the housing better. So, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pauline Goodis, and I'm going to identify myself as being the chairman of the Lewiston Planning Board that approved this with a five-two vote last Monday. What I think you need to understand is this is going to be thirty-five units of good, clean housing. Out of those thirty-five units, eleven are going to be handicapped accessible. The breakdown is fifteen one-bedroom apartments. Four of those one-bedrooms are going to be market rate, five will be handicapped accessible. There'll be fourteen two-bedroom apartments, three of those will be market rate, four of them will be handicapped accessible. There'll be six three-bedroom apartments, out of those six, two will be handicapped accessible. I'm sure you've read the paper, or you've seen the news, we have people who are living in apartments, they may be first-floor apartments, but are they truly handicapped accessible? There was a gentleman, I believe it was either Ash or Pine, that lost his electric wheelchair because he could not get it into his apartment. I mean, I think that we really need to see handicapped accessible in the downtown. I know the planning board thought long and hard, and this was discussed as to what would be the best use of this property. It's a vacant lot right now, and I think the planning board looked at it as, this is going to be fitting into the comprehensive plan, it's a vacant lot, there was housing there before, there should be housing back there now. And that is, I believe, the reason that the planning board voted that way, that was my perception. Now, as a taxpayer, putting the yellow hat on, as a taxpayer, I would advocate if we build this building, or if the city approves a rezoning, that maybe the city council needs to take a hard look at housing. Maybe we need to put the pressure, or you folks need to put the pressure on code enforcement to hammer down on the landlords who are continually in violation of code. We keep saying we're going to do it, and yes, we have torn down a number of units. My answer is, too bad we've torn down two hundred and sixty-two, but does that mean that we allow another hundred units to be substandard and allow people to live in lead, mold, rat-infested, substandard housing? I don't think we should be doing that. I think you need to take a hard look and say, if we're going to approve putting in thirty-five units of good housing, then maybe you need to take a hard look and say, maybe we need to remove thirty-five units of substandard housing. We need to do something. I ask any one of you who have not been in to some of these buildings that are in violation of a number of the code, maybe you need to take a walk-through and see what some of these people are living in. That's my personal opinion, and I really believe that people have a right, if they're paying rent, to live in someplace safe. I don't think we should be allowing landlords to continue with substandard housing, and the only people that can change that are, actually, the seven of you up there, there's only six tonight. But if you approve this, maybe you ought to be sitting down with Mr. Hediger, and saying, what are the next units that need to be taken down? If they're that substandard, let's take them down. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Scott, I live at forty-five Pettingill Street, and I have to tell you that when I first heard about this project, I had some, a bit of issues with it. I am a taxpayer also, and I, my first initial response to myself was, do we need more subsidized housing in Lewiston? And so I had to think about it, and I had to think about it as somebody who's lived in Lewiston for fifty years, and who grew up in the downtown, and grew up with family that lived on Horton Street, on Pierce Street, on Cedar Street, who had family members that lived, tended to an apartment, a small apartment, and what, what do we see down here now? So I went to the planning board meeting last week, and I wanted to hear what was being said, and what this project really consisted of. And when I heard what was going to happen, I, again, I have concerns, I had concerns about the parking, because I'd like to see parking available for every people, everybody that lives in a building. But when I heard about the handicap accessible apartments, and I look at what we have downtown, and I see this now as a project that is something that we possibly do need, and I am actually leaning more towards being in favor of this. Now, do I still have concerns that we have larger density on Pine Street? I do have concerns with that, because I already see that we have a lot of traffic issues. So I see things, I'm starting to see this in a different light in respect to other issues that we have to address in our community. And that is better streets, better driving, better places, better accessibility for people. I also agree with what Pauline just said, is that we have to look at some of the other buildings down there, and we have to hold these landlords accountable for what's happening. Because back in the day, when we lived downtown, we held ourselves accountable for living down there. We climbed our buildings, we took care of our property, we lived there, we didn't own it, we rented, but we held ourselves accountable for where we lived. And that's what I think we need to start focusing on, is talking to our neighbors and fixing the downtown, all of us together. So I am leaning toward favor in this. I have concerns about the kids as well. I was six years previously on the Lewiston School Board, and I do know what the density in our schools are, I know it very well, actually. But I also know that that growth in our school department is also leveling out to some extent. And I know that we will be seeing people that are living in some bad apartments that need to move to a better place, and that we'll probably see some relocation in that respect. And so, is this things that we need to continue talking about in the future? Absolutely. And we are going to need to look seriously at our schools, and how much population we have on there, and we're going to need to seriously have conversations about how we're going to make our downtown better. But we also need to consider that when somebody is willing to make this kind of investment, particularly when you look at what needs to be done to that piece of land to clean it up, if we were just going to get a market rate person to build that, I don't think that that would happen. And so we need to look at this in a bigger light, we need to invest more in market rate apartments, I think. We need to invest a lot more for what our community needs, is to grow in revenue, but we also need to look at what we have here, and this is something that we need, and so I've changed my mind. I'm definitely leaning more towards this, and I thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment?
Do you count? I'm not sure.
I don't know if I count as public, but I would like to say a few things, and I think the public has said things much better than I could ever hope to say, candidly. I've got to tell you, Avesta is one of the premier affordable housing, workforce housing developers in the state. We've been courting them for many years, I was delighted when they started looking around, coming around, they walked around with Mystic, they walked around with CCI, so they have really worked to put this project together. I want to also say, work, not workforce, but our housing has a life cycle. A lot of the triple deckers built in the heart of downtown were built eighteen nineties to nineteen ten, nineteen twenty. They've been used very hard, they've been put away wet, they've not been well-maintained in all circumstances, and there comes a time where they do need to come down. Counselor Pettingill, I hear your concerns about lead, I don't think we can fix them all. We get three million dollars worth of federal lead money- We get $3 million worth of federal lead money every three years, and it's going to take 80 years to fix all of the housing, if we're fortunate enough to get $1 million a year to fix these things. These buildings aren't going to last that long. Those kids that get lead poisoning are just going to be the special needs kids in the schools. We've got to do something to fix that sooner rather than later. Lewiston used to have a population of 40,000 people, or about 36,500 now. We've torn down a bunch of housing. It's the worst of the housing stock, code enforcement. I will tell you, recently really is stepping it up. It's a constant conversation on the third floor. Who's got an ADK? Who are we taking to court? How are we going to get this done? How are we going to get it down? But you can't just tear things down to prosperity. You'd need new housing. This project is workforce housing. Many of these people spoke. These are not people that aren't working. Many of these people are working and are working very hard. They just don't make a lot of money in the ways they've chosen to live. So I would strongly encourage the council to support this rezoning. We'll be talking again about the home dollars that they're asking for, the TIF financing. We'll be coming to you to talk about that, but this is the first step on the path that I would encourage you to approve.
My name is Sophia, and I live on Main Street in Lewiston. So I'm thankful for the residents of Lewiston to have come to this public hearing and said their concerns and their opinions because they are the residents, and we need their input and consent. So I'm glad for each and every one of you for coming tonight. So all those who were before me highlighted great points and great things, great things, but I just want to reiterate some things. So one of the counselors mentioned lead poisoning. So as you know, there is a majority of New Mainers who live in downtown area, who live in subsidized housing, and who have their kids experience lead poisoning. So this new, this new building, this new investment will help those kids and those parents and those families move into a better housing, a better affordable housing for them, so that they can concentrate in schools and be active in their communities. Another thing is, this is progress. This is progress for us. This is progress for Lewiston. Lewiston is the second-largest city in Maine, is the most diverse city. Our diversity is our strength, and because of that, we need to continue to invest in the people who are coming. I have a lot of Bates College friends who come to all over the country, all over the world, who come to Bates and come to love Lewiston. But after college, they want to live in Lewiston, so where can they find housing? They move to Brunswick. They move to Beth. But they come here to work. This is like they fall in love with Lewiston like I have, like my family has, like everyone who comes here. So that's another option for people to stay in Lewiston, to invest in Lewiston. That's economic growth right there. Okay, let's see. So there are landlords who take advantage of people who can't speak and advocate for Landlords who don't clean up, landlords who don't fix heating, landlords who don't care of their tenants, and landlords who increase money and rent for people who barely can make a living wage. So this all around is perfect for Lewiston. I love Lewiston. I want Lewiston to grow, and this is the perfect example. So thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? All right, we'll bring it back to the council, and before I call on you, Councilwoman Mark I just want to say the mayor was in error. Councilwoman Mark was correct, and the new building will be in the Montello School District.
I had to change a few things. I'll start right here. There are at least four citations from the comp plan that both Avesta and city staff have put forward to justify this project. But if you look at page 252, you will see a modest phrase, "Support a great school system." And I do believe that we have a great school system here in Lewiston, but it takes a lot of money to support a great school system. It costs money. The expected tax revenue generated by this development will not cover the cost of annual educational expenditures resulting from the anticipated influx of school-aged children. There'll be an estimated 30 to 50 students added to local schools from this single building. It's my understanding that our schools, even with new construction, are already overcrowded. Has anyone talked to the superintendent and principals at the schools that will be effective? If so, what has their reaction been? Is it fair to our students and teachers to further burden their classrooms? It has been argued that because nearby properties are not in compliance with city land use regulations, that this project should also be exempt from them. Do we really want to set a precedent for contract zoning our standards into a patchwork quilt of differently zoned parcels? Whether you support this project or not, it is our responsibility as city leaders to examine what the potential negative impacts of 35 rental units in a space currently zoned for 11 units would be. What happens with this project will set a precedent, possibly one with unforeseen negative impacts on not only this neighborhood but on the entire city. We cannot talk big about beautification and attracting investment all the while making decisions that repeatedly undermine what we say we aspire to. Approximately 30% of Lewiston's real property is already non-taxable. As the footprints of the three largest nonprofits get bigger, it isn't our responsibility to maximize potential revenue from taxable land. It is imperative that we begin to look at Lewiston's overall picture when we consider development projects, no matter where they are in the city, and prioritize sustainable development that will improve our economic condition as well as maximize tax revenue. We are going to be forced to invest a disproportionate amount of our resources to support this project. Our seniors, who have spent a lifetime of paying taxes in this community, are already strained, as we have seen by recent abatement requests. This project will inevitably place more burden on the tax-paying members of our community who can least afford it. This is not sound planning, as it does not take into account Lewiston's current financial load and precarious budgetary future, as we heard earlier tonight. Therefore, I do not accept this contract zoning request.
Anyone else on the council? Oh, Councilwoman Ray?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I wanted to thank all the folks who turned out for tonight. Clearly, this is a really important project for our community, and I'm so glad to have all of these perspectives incoming. And thank you to the team up front for your presentation now, and I know you've been working on this for quite some time and spending a lot of time on it, so thank you. I wanted to point out a couple of things that stood out to me. We're talking about safe and affordable housing opportunities with this project, and everyone in this community deserves that opportunity. We've seen a number of mixed-income projects come through at this point, and they are filled and thriving, so there's clearly a need for it. When I moved to Lewiston, I was looking for safe and affordable housing, and it took a while to find it. I've lived in four different apartments with varying degrees of success and safety and affordability, and that compromised a lot of times for me, future savings. I'm so lucky and privileged to work where I do and earn the wage that I do, but it was still tough to find spaces that worked for me and my circumstance. I think going back to November of 2018, there were a number of reasons why parking standards were relaxed, and I think we talked about how young families and younger generations are moving to the city. Speaking as a millennial myself, we aren't necessarily looking for a parking spot or to continue owning a car if we currently do. And so I think that, A, the parking standards have been relaxed, and this confirms, but B, there are opportunities for parking if families do choose that. It's also on one of the main roads with a bike lane, so folks can feel comfortable commuting that way as well. The last point I'd like to make, I've attended, I think, all of the Healthy Neighborhood Planning Council forums. I usually go later in the event because I've learned that you go around the room and you kind of vote via sticker about what features you'd like to see in the neighborhood, and I like to kind of see towards the end just that visual representation of what folks in this community are looking for in housing. And I'd say the Avesta project hits quite a number of those things that are coming out of those thoughtful and really community-oriented forums. So I'm really grateful again for the work, for the voice of the community at this presentation, and I'm going to be very proud to support this moving forward.
Councilwoman Lyson?
Thank you. Couple of things that, you know, I think we have such an excellent team that's proposing this project. Often, you have to have leaps of faith, but, you know, we've got CCI, we've got Avesta, we've got Platts Associates. You know, a good team to put together a project that will work for the city. And there's been some comments about the costs associated with this project and, for example, educating kids. Take a look at a single-family home and equate how much, how many children they generate and how much it costs and how much taxes they pay. No one's going to come close to that. This is an investment in our community. We all know that. But people have to live somewhere. Those workers who work in places, who staff other places, have to live someplace. And yeah, they have children who need education. And a couple of the speakers talked about how important having new youth in our community, new blood, new, you know, people who will get an education, who will stay here and, you know, make this community a better place. So again, residential growth does not pay for taxes when they have kids. And I'm one of those, you know, seniors who are on a fixed income who say, I welcome the opportunity to provide housing, especially in our downtown, that's quality, affordable, and safe. We're going through some pains in rental registration, trying to make landlords accountable, so there's efforts on a lot of different fronts for making sure that things are accountable, especially when they're as important as housing. Another speaker talked about how housing is so important to the mental health and physical health of not just the youth but the adults. It's true. It's the number-one predictor of people's bad health is how stable or unstable their housing is. So it's, again, I see this as a great opportunity. We're at the beginning of a process, but without this rezoning, the project really can't go forward. So I think this is an important time, and I really appreciate all the people coming out, all the faces out there who don't have an agenda but are willing to come and speak and talk about the importance of housing that they may not ever experience, but they know how important it is to them and therefore to other people who will be able to take advantage of new, affordable, quality housing in our downtown. It's almost unheard of, and I think Kirsten talked about how long ago, new housing, there wasn't any new housing for 40 years in this community. It's no wonder, you know, that there are lots of places that just don't need code, and I'm certainly concerned. But this management team, this developer, this, you know, architectural firm, they're going to do a good job, and we can be proud of it, and it can be another statement about how this community is revitalizing itself. So again, thank you for coming out, especially the public. It's really democracy in action, so thank you.
Councilwoman Ray?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Number one, I want to thank everyone out there for your comments. They were very good comments and right on the money. I would also like to thank our New Mainers for standing up and speaking as they did. I think it's a terrific thing that happened this evening. The other thing I would like to say is I would like to thank your patience, Mr. Platts and Mr. Grover and two ladies out front, throughout this conversation. I know it's been a long one. One of my other things is that I've worked with Mr. Platts while I was in the fire service in Lewiston, and I found him to be very progressive, very forward-thinking. Many things in the city of Lewiston would not have happened if it would not have been for him, along with our city employees that worked through the process. And in saying that, Mr. Grover as well, whom I've known for quite a while and trust quite well. Everything that was said this evening made a lot of sense. My concern, again, as I explained the first time, was for my constituents, the tax base within the city of Lewiston. And I want to be a visionary. I want to be thought of as a visionary. I'd like to be younger than I am, but that doesn't happen in this world. It seems my birthday never changes, you know? But anyways, I think there's a lot of forward-thinking here, and I do believe in the process. I also want to say that I believe in what Councilor Markert was saying. As far as our process as a council and the thoughts that have to go in front of us to come to these decisions, they're not easy decisions all the time. So I just wanted to make sure I said that. So thank you very much, everyone, for your comments this evening and for your patience.
Any other discussion on the council?
To call the roll? Counselor from word seven?
No.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
No.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of four to two.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number five.
Item number five, amendments to the solid waste policy regarding fee schedule changes. Requested action to approve the proposed amendments to policy manual number 52, the solid waste policy as recommended by the Director of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Ray, seconded by Councilwoman Lyson. Can you just give an overview? Or Dale, whoever.
Dale? He's coming. Thank you, guys. Yes, last fall, the Public Works Committee looked at the solid waste regulation, or the fee schedule, and had also looked at MWAAC and re-energies fees. And to make it competitive and to streamline and maybe to have some delivery and reduce our trucking cost, I'm sorry, the noise is distracting me a little bit.
No worries.
Apologize. Was to increase our solid waste tipping fees to $100 a ton and to remain competitive. So that's the only change.
Thanks. Any discussion on the council?
So my question is, where did this number come from? Was it a study of surrounding municipalities, similar municipalities?
Yeah, I was looking at the other rates at the time, and it was the Public Works Committee looking at those rates and recommendation that $100 a ton isn't even on that.
I'm sorry if you said that before. I couldn't hear anything, so I'm sorry.
And just to add a little bit, one of the things that the committee was interested in doing was to have our rates be a little bit higher than MWAAC because it is beneficial for us to have people go right over there as opposed to dropping it at our facility because there's all of the handling costs, and then we have to pay disposal fees and all of that at the other side. So we're trying to both provide an incentive for people to go directly to the incinerator with stuff that should go there and trying to also minimize the amount of material that we end up having to handle. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council. Call the roll.
Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three? Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 6 to 0.
Agenda item number 6.
Item number 6, appointment to the city council, of a city council representative to the Maine Municipal Association's Legislative Policy Committee. There are two items for requested action. The first item is to receive nominations from the council for a city councillor to serve as the city council's representative to the Maine Municipal Association Legislative Policy Committee.
I would like to nominate Alicia Ray for the position.
Second. So a motion by Counselor Lyson, seconded by Counselor LaJoy. Any further discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? So do you just need me to make an appointment?
Right, well, so then the second item would be technically to appoint Counselor Ray to serve as the council's representative to the Maine Municipal Association Legislative Policy Committee.
Okay, so we vote on that first motion and then come back?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we can go ahead and call the roll?
Oh.
We have one nominee.
Right, we have one nominee.
Okay.
So that really takes care of item number 1.
Okay.
Because no other councillor's been nominated.
Okay.
So then for item number 2, the motion before you would be to appoint Counselor Ray to serve as the council's representative to the Maine Municipal Association Legislative Policy Committee. So then we'd need a --
So moved.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
I have a councillor, I'm sorry, I have a motion by Counselor Lyson, seconded by Counselor LaJoy. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
I accept the nomination. That feels like a critical moment.
Yeah, no one.
Anyone can ask me?
Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 6 to 0.
Agenda item number 7.
Item number 7, authorization to accept transfer forfeiture funds. Requested action pursuant to Title 15 Maine revised statutes annotated section 58243 and section 58224A. The city council hereby acknowledges and approves of the transfer of $613 or any portion thereof in the case of the state of Maine versus Ude of D. Court records being funds forfeited pursuant to the court process. It is further acknowledged that these funds shall be credited to the City of Lewiston Drug Enforcement Program account.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Counselor Markcott, seconded by Counselor Ray. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 6 to 0.
Agenda item number 8.
Item number 8, reports and updates.
Counselor Ray.
So the school committee met since the last time we met, on March 13th for a budget meeting, as well as yesterday, March 18th for another budget meeting, as well as a regular meeting. We are prepping to meet with you all next Monday.
What time?
6:00 PM?
6:45.
6:45, if I stand corrected. The school committee will be meeting at 6:00 PM to do a workshop before our joint meeting, so.
And it's where at the high school?
That will be at the Lewiston High School in the multipurpose room.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, of course. In our regular meeting last night, we accepted some revisions to policies IKA, IKAB, and IKB, which are, sorry, progress report, homework, and grading and assessment policies. So I know those have been talked about a lot at the school committee level, so just wanted to let you all know about that. The second thing we talked about was the Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan and the school portion of that, which is about $2.6 million. That has been presented to the school committee and approved to move forward as it is. I believe there are a number of cuts that already exist or that already happened previous to us sending it to you all, but I did want to let you know there was a favorable recommendation to fund all $2.6 million of that. I think that's it, unless anyone has questions? I invite those.
Great. Agenda item number 9.
So item number 9 is any other business councillors or others may have relating to Lewiston city government. The city administrator does have an item regarding the loan request for the Transit Committee. So the, there's a suggested motion to suspend the council rules and to add an item to the agenda this evening, so that would need a motion.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Counselor Lyson, seconded by Counselor LaJoy.
And if there's no discussion, we can call the roll on that?
Any discussion on the council? Ed, could you just give an overview, or Dennis, whichever one?
This is just to, just to, to --
Suspend the rule.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Discussion now? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, motion passed by vote of 6 to 0. So now the agenda item before you is authorizing no-interest loans to the Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee in amounts not to exceed $225,000 to assist the committee in meeting its working capital needs. Requested action to approve authorizing no-interest loans to the Auburn Lewiston Transit Committee in amounts not to exceed $225,000 to assist the committee in meeting its working capital needs.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Lyson, seconded by Counselor LaJoy. Ed, could you, or Dennis, could you give an overview?
Sure. A number of years ago, the operator of the transit system was required to carry the cash flow of the organization if the feds were slow in paying. And at one point, that got up to an $800,000 amount, which was putting a lot of stress, obviously, on the operator, and which also, at the time, we were looking at bidding out the contract to operate the system, was a disincentive for any other operator to make a bid. So Auburn in particular had suggested that we assume the cash flow position, carrying cash flow when necessary for the organization, which is how the new contract was bid and was awarded and bid. For the first several years under that system, we didn't have to help out, because the feds all of a sudden got reasonably prompt in making payments. Last year, we had to provide some money, $187,000 each, split between, each city to the organization for a short-term period until the feds paid. This year, as you all know, the feds have been slow because of the budget issues in Washington, so they are five and a half months behind in authorizing the FTA payments. So this would authorize us to make another such loan. We actually probably didn't even have to bring this to you, except they needed a little bit more this time than last time, and the original one specified 100 and whatever it was, I think 150 last year. It was 150 last year. They're asking for 187.5 this year. We're suggesting that you authorize up to $225,000 so that we don't have to come back every year if they keep it within a reasonable limit. No interest for no longer than 120 days. Actually, it would be much shorter than that if the federal payments come in to cover their shortfall.
So this is just a loan until they get reimbursed from the federal government?
Correct.
Any, Counselor Markcott?
Is the 120 days within the fiscal year?
In the prior loan, it was paid for. Part of the, I believe the original one said it had to be paid and pulled by June 30th.
Does this one?
I think that language is going to be the same this time.
Right.
We can certainly look at that. I would have, I believe it is the same. We haven't changed anything since the last promissory deal.
120 days from the receipt of the federal money that has to be paid.
Correct.
Right.
If it, if it goes over 120 days, any amount owed, if it goes over the fiscal year, any amount owed will automatically get charged against the new appropriation for the transit authority.
I'm reading this as with a maturity of the shorter of 120 days for the time of the receipt of the federal reimbursements, meaning we will be paid on the 120th day, regardless of whether they get their federal reimbursement.
No, it's the shorter of. So if they get reimbursed three days after we make the loan, they pay us back right The sooner of might have been better language, but it can't be more than 120. It should be --
But I'm saying, no more than 120.
But it should be, if they get paid on the fifth day after we give them the loan by the feds.
Then we get paid then.
Then we pay, they pay it back right then.
But the 120 days takes us out into a new fiscal year.
If we cross fiscal years, any loan amount that's outstanding would be charged against their new budget, their new, the payments.
What is the approximate budget?
330? 300? About 330,000, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
Is this, are they asking for money currently, or is this just a policy in the event that they do in the future?
They have asked for the money, because they will be out there, they are unable to pay their bills by the end of this month.
Correct. Okay, so both essentially, that they're asking for money now, and then this is foreseeing asking money in the future?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think, I think that's likely to happen, because over the years, we have directed them to spend down any excess funds they have that aren't required for operating purposes.
Yeah, no, I just, I just wanted to clarify.
Right.
And then, is this going before the council in Auburn as well?
Yes.
Are they voting on that?
They had a, they had a workshop discussion last night where it was support, generally support, the reaction was supportive.
Yeah, but they haven't voted to pass it yet?
No, and this, this would be subject to them doing the same.
Okay, and it has that language, because I don't, I don't want to pay for Auburn, who very clearly, after, you know, the [inaudible] meeting, do whatever they want to do.
The last phrase.
I don't want to pay for Auburn.
Right, I appreciate that. The last phrase of the resolve says, "Subject to the city's loans being matched by a similar amount from the city of Auburn."
Okay.
And that was how we did it last time as well.
Right.
Counselor Ray?
Is there any possibility that the circumstance would extend beyond this, in effect, meaning are there other committees that could ask us for a zero-interest loan, knowing this is an open door? I personally don't remember this coming before us.
We did it a year ago. We did it, well, I'll take it back, we did it in December of 2017.
Ha, that would be why.
But it was for last year.
Okay, and I, so that's where that concern is coming from.
Yes. Is it possible others might come before us? It is, they are probably not as likely in that most of our other agencies aren't as dependent upon, our joint agencies aren't dependent to the same extent on federal funds, and it's the federal government that is difficult to predict from year to year in terms of when they'll get their budget approved and how quickly they will handle the paperwork required to get the reimbursements out.
I think my response would be, I think this seems appropriate in this situation, especially knowing the history behind it and knowing how the federal government works. But my preference would be that this is an exception, not a rule, is all.
I think we would all, I think we would all agree with that. I will tell you, however, that, as we mentioned a little bit earlier, the transit system does not have a whole lot of money to carry its cash needs and is, is being, we've directed, encouraged them to spend down any excess they had. And the federal government, you just can't ever tell what's going to happen, as I think we've all learned over the years.
Counselor Markcott?
What would be the reason to spend down the excess?
It has largely been to keep the operating subsidy from each community's general fund down.
Down.
Keep it to as small amount as possible. So if they have extra money, the city's preference has been, over time, for that extra money to be applied to the next year's budget.
To the next year's budget?
Yeah.
Okay, I was thinking, if they're spending down, they're spending frivolously just to get the next funding source from the feds or wherever.
In effect, what we're trying, what the cities have been doing is saying you can't have much in the way of an unallocated fund balance. So spend that down to keep our subsidies low.
And this is the only entity out there that we're doing this for, which is currently a joint agency?
Not the only one that we have asked to spend down fund balance. We have --
I meant the --
The loan?
The loan.
They are the only ones.
If we had a policy that simply extended the possibilities to joint agencies so that other organizations don't think, hey, we, no, want the same thing they have got.
I suspect if any of the other ones got into the same situation, they would be coming and asking us, and I would rather that we not give them an open invitation.
I just don't want to extend it beyond joint agencies.
Oh, and it, we certainly don't, to the best of my knowledge, we don't loan general fund money. Do you think of any?
Joint agency?
Yeah. Most of the, all the loans we do, other than that, would be primarily community development block grant funds.
Correct.
Any other questions on the council? So we have a motion, a second.
We do, yes. Call the roll. Call the roll. Words, what, 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 6 to 0.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. I have a motion by Counselor Lyson, seconded by Counselor Ray. All those in favor?